All right, if we could gather our seats, Mr. Assistant City Manager. Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 29th City Council meeting. Go ahead and call the meeting to order, and this evening, we have invocation by Chaplain Themba M. Mzizi, did I get that right? It's close, with the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, and if our flag salute could be led by Ms. Edwards.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, I truly thank you for these leaders. We have chosen to lead and to make this city one of the best cities in the Riverside County. As they meet once again to transact the business of the city, I pray, dear Lord, for your divine visitation to be felt in every discourse. May your presence bring peace, harmony, and common sense in these chambers. I pray, dear Lord, that the outcome of these deliberations tonight will seek to satisfy the interests of the community and improve the standard of living of every resident of the city of Temecula. I pray, dear Lord, that you would help us, we, the law-abiding citizens of this city, to be loyal to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except that which you have established yourself. The authorities that exist in this city have been established by you, Lord. As we enter into the festive season, celebrating with our friends and families how you have ushered us into the post-COVID era, Lord, I pray that the leaders and the citizens of this city will never forget how you have led us and protected us in the past. Lord, I pray tonight for the law enforcement officers who are here present, and those who are patrolling the streets of this city tonight, that you would bless them and protect them as well as their families and friends, for I pray in your holy name, amen.
Amen. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Alexander?
Here.
Councilmember Edward?
Here.
Mayor Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Schwank?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
All right, we're going to start first this evening with a presentation, a certificate of recognition for Brian Lively, Temecula Valley VFW. Let me read a little bit about what happened here, because I think it's a remarkable, remarkable journey, remarkable service to our community, and just a remarkable human being that helps our fellow veterans here in the city of Temecula. City Council is proud to recognize Brian Lively for honoring late Navy veteran and post-member Daniel Welts. Mr. Lively is commander for the Temecula VFW, Post 4089. The post was contacted in October to support the Bring Daniel Home Project to retrieve the remains of Mr. Welts, who passed away in late September near Yellowstone National Park in Montana. Many organizations came together to raise more than $4,000 to fund shipment of his remains, his motorcycle, and his trailer. Due to bad weather, the arrangement to bring Daniel home could have been delayed for months. Instead of accepting this delay, Mr. Lively flew to Montana and handled the over 1,000-mile transportation by himself. We're proud of his selfless deed to honor fellow veteran and thank Post 4089 for bringing Mr. Welts back to his hometown of Temecula. I also wanted to thank Temecula Harley for helping support that as well and help with some of the fundraising. Do you have a few words to say here, sir?
Well, thank you, but it's a true, you know, it's the community that we live in. They're the ones that need the pat on the back, and I feel blessed that I'm, you know, in some way part of this community. And a bunch of the motorcycle clubs came together, the veteran motorcycle clubs, like the Rough Riders, the Vietnam Veterans, and then Combat Veterans, and then the Veterans Nation really helped out. But it's truly the community. I've never raised $4,200 in three hours.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And really, the only reason I came down here is so I could have my picture taken with Brian, because he's like the only guy in Temecula that makes me look small. So, thank you, sir. All right, now, following up with that, we have another presentation this evening. This one's a little bit more detailed, but Kimberly Adams, come on up to the podium, if you wouldn't mind. Welcome. You are our special guest of honor this evening. Just 20 years ago, Temecula Valley didn't have the tourism, certainly anywhere near to what we have today, but we did have potential back then, and you recognized that potential and saw the importance of this valley and the jewel that it was. You stepped up and transformed this area into a remarkable tourism destination, remarkable marketing, and you brought forward some just amazing expertise, passion, dedication, and service to this community. This motivation, your vision of what Temecula would become, your heart that you put into this, and the passion that you showed all of us. You assembled a remarkable board of individuals, the staff, the funding to make this all happen, and all these years later, look where we are. And so you worked behind the scenes very humbly, too, and you have forever put your imprint and your vision on this valley. We share this beautiful brand now with Visit Temecula Valley, the city of Temecula, our partners at Pachanga, the Chambers of Commerce, and everybody who came behind your efforts. And so we take very, very seriously your responsibility, and then you went ahead and retired. So without further ado here, the city of Temecula has a proclamation for you. We're all going to come down off the dais to read this and take a photo together, and we also have a beautiful award that Ms. Edwards will bring down, and it says, "Presented to Kimberly Adams for significant contributions, inspiration, leadership, and 18 years, steadfast commitment to the success of tourism for the city of Temecula and the heart of Southern California wine country." Now, with that said, I also want to read this amazing proclamation. Let me get my glasses on. Whereas over 18 years ago, Kimberly Adams emerged as a leader whose vision, creativity, and hard work founded the city of Temecula's original visitors bureau, later renamed Visit Temecula Valley. Visit Temecula Valley quickly became the leading resource center for travel in Temecula Valley, which grew with marketing and business development strategies, attracting tourism and enticing entrepreneurs, winemakers, investors, hoteliers, and mavericks who took a chance to build their dreams in the Temecula Valley. And Temecula has evolved into a nationally and internationally recognized destination, welcoming up to 3 million visitors a year, with the travel industry generating over $1.3 billion annually. Your work and with the Board of Directors and staff sought to highlight Temecula's best assets, such as its rolling hills, vineyards, ocean breezes, the charm of Old Town, wonderful hotels and lodging accommodations, championship golf courses, restaurants, shopping, hot air balloons, wine tasting, exciting tours, luxury and entertainment at Pachanga Resort and Casino, and so much more. The work of Ms. Adams has been a critical key to the success of Temecula's tourism industry, and the original branding of Visit Temecula Valley inspired the city's logo and tagline, "The Heart of Southern California Wine Country." You championed countless marketing strategies, successfully placing Temecula Valley on the map as Southern California Wine Country and into the future with a breadth of other experiences, including latest "Live Glass Full" branding campaign. Your love for Temecula translated through your work and established Temecula as a hub for various attractions, including those luxury resorts, world-class wineries, high-quality restaurants, live entertainment, beautiful golf courses, adventurous hot air balloon rides, horseback rides through the vineyards, and whimsical wedding venues. This team built it beautifully, marketed it beautifully, and now they will come, and they did. And I therefore, Mayor Ron, on behalf of the City Council, City of Temecula, recognize you to be a primary leader of establishing Temecula as a top tourist destination, and hereby proclaim August 9th, 2022, to be Kimberly Adams' Day.
Oh.
We missed it.
Yeah, so...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. August?
So, so look forward to that next year. So, and if we could explain the August 9th, 2022 sort of thing, why that all happened that way?
You want me to answer that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Isn't that your official retirement date?
Yes. All right, so we're a little late to the draw here. Sorry about that. It got a little busy this year.
Got a little crazy.
But we wanted to do this respectfully, only because, you know, there's so many people here that would like to say some words. I know my colleagues would as well. A lot of folks came out to thank you this evening, but we wanted to make sure we did this the right way, and so would have been great to do this in August, but we wanted to make sure we did it the right way. So appreciate everything you're doing. If my colleagues would join me down at the dais...
I loved how the city manager asked for permission from his wife to answer a question.
Absolutely.
Well, Kimberly, I'll go ahead and kick it off. It's going to be difficult for me to top what the mayor read, how he shared, the words he shared, and then the proclamation, but just from the bottom of my heart, someone that's been here quite a while, 20-plus years in the city, I get to benefit from your leadership, the city that you envisioned, the city that you've helped create. So it's just a pleasure to have known you. I know you're not going anywhere, so we'll still be able to share in our wonderful community together, but I just really wanted to say thank you for all the work that you've done for Temecula and the broader region in tourism and just quality of life. You've made our city and our region a much better place to live, so thank you for that.
I remember a meeting at Temecula Creek Inn with the chamber, and I think Pam Voight was the chairman of the chamber at the time, and they, you know, we sat down for lunch, and they started talking about promoting Temecula, and I thought, well, we promote Temecula, Blue and Wine Festival. They said, no, really, really, really promoting Temecula. And I thought it sounded like a great idea, and I thought the obstacle would be pulling all the hoteliers together and the vintners together and everyone together to promote wine country, and it just happened, and you made it look seamless and really easy. And then before you knew it, we have a $1,000,000 being generated through tourism in Temecula. Now, we don't get to keep all of the $1,000,000, unfortunately, but those people shop in our stores, they stay in our hotels, they come to our events, and they visit our beautiful facilities and amenities. And it started with this lady right here who had the vision, and boy, you'd have to have the vision, and she certainly did, but on top of that, you have to have the leadership, too, and she had that. She has it all. She has it all, Mr. City Manager. Good answer. So on behalf of the city Temecula and everybody else that you've impacted in such a positive way, thank you. Thank you for your 18 years of service, and didn't it go fast?
No.
No. She's honest. She's taking a picture. And you know I love you.
Yes, we will.
Didn't it go fast?
No.
Well, I've lived here 31 years, and when I moved here, there was really nothing. The bumper stickers of the day were, "Where the hell is Temecula?" And so thanks to Kimberly, she really put us on the map. And I remember it being a big deal that we made it onto the weather, the weather maps, you know? There was Temecula. It was like, wow. So thank you for all your hard work and the time and effort you put into putting us on the map, and we are benefiting, you know, as a city because of that. Just look at the city hall and, you know, all the things, all the amenities that are here in our city is as a direct result of the tourism industry. So thank you for all you've done. Thank you.
All right, Kimberly, well, I think they've said almost everything, but I just want to thank you, I think, for all the residents who have been able to enjoy what you've brought to Temecula, and I just hope and pray that you have some time with your family and your daughters, and have some time to rest until you get your next mission. So thank you for everything. All right.
Bless you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We're going to make our way up there, and we have a bunch of folks who would also like to say a few words this evening. All right, first up is the office of Congressman Darrell Issa, Mike Hillman, District Director. How you doing, Mike?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Yeah, I'm Mike Hillman, District Director for Congressman Darrell Issa. Kimberly and I just met, but clearly you've made a big impact in this community, and my boss loves recognizing people who make a big positive impact on the community. So on behalf of Congressman Issa, I'd like to present this certificate of congressional special recognition to you and say thank you for all your hard work, because I live in the area as well, and it's great to see people making a big impact.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your retirement.
All right, next up, well, actually Congressman Ken Calvert was not able to attend this evening. There is also a congressional certificate on the table for you there, Kimberly, so he extends his warmest gratitude as well. Next up is Andrew Maciel Senior, President Pachanga Development Corporation.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. It's quite an honor to be here this evening. I can look back, actually, when I had black hair, when we started our venture into the casino enterprises, and you were very, very forthcoming in the very beginning stages, and there have been countless other presidents and board members that have worked with you throughout the years. And I think that the contributions that you've given us have not only been heartfelt, but I think from an economic standpoint, collective effort of the community. And I think forever you've had, I'm not reading from the script, because I can do this without it, but I think what you've done and have helped us, that you've identified and you could see from a visionary standpoint how all these elements of the winery in Old Town, Pachanga, the historical sites, and the balloon festival, and so forth, and now we actually encompass a little of our history, Puesca Mountain and Puesca days and that as well. And I believe that not only your vision has helped us, but I think it was more about your commitment. I really believe that your commitment to details and you wanting to do not only the right thing, but the proper thing, and the value you bring to our valleys, that you were inclusive of everyone. And I think on behalf of Pachanga Development Corporation and the people of Pachanga, we want to thank you for all that hard work and your hard efforts, and we have a little gift here for you. It's a little spa treatment and other things, and we hope you enjoy it, and you're going to be heavily missed, but I think if anything, you've built a strong foundation for all of us in this valley to grow from. So thank you.
And I think a line of credit at the casino, too, right?
Right.
By the way, Pachanga delivered several hundred cookies freshly baked by their own executive pastry chef across the way there in the conference center, so beat me to the cookies, please. We will also take a break at the end of the presentation. I want to mention recognizing Ms. Adams for the reception that follows, take a quick break from the council meeting, so make sure you grab some cookies from Pachanga. There's also a beautiful gift basket, like Andrew said, and also bundt cakes, care of the staff who worked closely with Kimberly over the years as well, all waiting for us across the way. Corey from Assemblymember Marie Waldron's office, good evening.
Good evening. Hello, everyone. My name is Corey Uden. I am a field representative for Assemblymember Marie Waldron, here on her behalf, as well as the behalf of Assemblymember Kelly Sayarto. And this will actually be our last official state resolution for this current 75th Assembly District, and we couldn't think of a better recipient. Truly somebody that embodies the spirit of Temecula, the heart of Temecula, and somebody who had a vision for this community and the leadership to bring it to fruition. People came together because of your leadership, and we honor you for that. Thank you so much.
All right, up next is our very own Third District Supervisor, Mr. Chuck Washington.
I had to give Kathy my phone, make sure I get, I don't have an official photographer, so. The city council does. And Mr. Mayor, I come empty-handed, and I don't want you to be offended by what I'm about to say. We presented her with a certificate of recognition closer to her retirement.
I understand.
So there. Kimberly and Erin have been friends for many years, but I think what I have admired most, and you and I have been down the path of ways together, haven't we? I was elected to the city council in 2003, and a year or two later, the council saw in its wisdom to appoint me and Ron Roberts as a subcommittee to go talk to this woman about forming a CBB and increasing our TOT to raise funds. I brought that proposal back. I think there was much discussion about it, but it got approved. And you guys did such a great job that we raised it again, right? And the hotels all agreed on that. And I just admired your business acumen, the way you were able to bring all that together and make it seem very appealing to people to pay more tax, you know?
Assessment. It's not a tax.
Assessment. It's not a tax. Transient occupancy tax. Not a tax. It's not a tax. Don't be fooled by that. Further on down the path, you and I have been able to partner in wine country and do some good work. Me being your arm candy and getting a lot of credit for something good that happened, but you doing all the heavy lifting and all the hard brain work. But again, that is succeeding in wine country, and that didn't take off initially. We were just in here in the city, but that was your brainchild to expand that out into wine country. And it's been a tremendous asset, what you've brought to wine country as well, and I enjoyed seeing the fruits of that labor, and it has given confidence. I saw Phil Bailey's here tonight. Phil and I have worked on a couple of other things for wine country, and I think there's confidence in wine country because of the work you've done that's been a success and benefited wine country as well as the city of Temecula. Everywhere we go now, and I'm going all over the state with the State Association of Counties, I don't have to tell people where Temecula is anymore. I don't have to tell them about that we have a wine district, let alone a good one. I brag about it, and I think a lot of that goes back to the early years where you helped promote through Visit Temecula Valley, which was the subsequent name, and the assessments that helped market and grow that business. And so, you know, along with the fact that Kathy and I, Kathy's here, along with the fact that we consider you a friend, a dear friend, and we love you dearly, I really admire your business sense and all the great work you've done in this valley. I know it's been a long 18 years, Mary Ann, got you to admit that, but I think it's been a labor of love. At least that's a sense I've gotten. So congratulations on your retirement.
And funny enough, we all secretly refer to Chuck as Arm Candy. We're also sitting here this evening in the Jeff Comachero Council Chambers, so I'd like to invite up the one and only Jeff Comachero.
Thanks for letting me in the building. Appreciate it. When I first met Kimberly, you were working for LEGO, which leads me to my one question for this evening. I have two granddaughters. Do you have any connections? But I remember back in, I think it was 2004, when a group from the chamber, and I honestly don't recall if you were among them, I don't think you were, but you might have been, came to meet with me, and I think it was Ron Roberts at the time, and made the suggestion that the chamber kind of split into what the chamber does and a visitors bureau, and the first question we asked was, well, how are we going to fund it? And the answer was, we want you to raise the transient occupancy tax, the hotel tax, from 8% where it was to 10%, and that would fund it and dedicate that extra 2%. It seemed like a reasonable thing to do. As tax-averse as we were and still are, this is a tax that people pay who don't live here. They come to visit and they pay it. So it was, you know, pretty benign. And so ultimately, we agreed, and the Temecula Valley Convention and Visitors Bureau was formed later to become Visit Temecula Valley. And later, as was said before, I think Chuck brought it up, then you wanted another 2%. Why don't you just bleed us dry? But you were doing such a good job by then, and it was so clear that the money would be well spent, and we still had room to grow with that transient occupancy tax. So again, we agreed, and I don't think anybody here I know, all of my colleagues at the time, nobody ever regretted that. Just a terrific job. And one of the things that strikes me, and I'll always remember this, you know, in the early days, when I would travel around and, you know, I was involved in the National League of Cities... of Cities and State League, and so I traveled a lot. And when people would ask me, where am I from? And I'd say, Temecula, they'd look at me funny, like, what, how do you spell that? How do you pronounce it? You know, where's Temecula? And then one day I was at a conference in Atlanta and I was in a department store buying something for my wife. And perfume, I think. And the clerk asked me where I was from and I said, Temecula. She went, oh, Temecula. And I thought, okay, that was it. You know, we've made it. And it's only gone up and up and up and up from there. And I don't know of anybody who has had more to do with that success than you've had, clearly. And, you know, it's nice to know that there's a star in your family. But congratulations on what has been a great career. And, you know, from an old council member and mayor, my sincere thank you for making our job so much easier. It's really appreciated.
And Carol Lee Brady, Board President, Rancho Water.
Good evening. I'm here this evening as a representative of the board for Rancho California Water District. Thank you so much for allowing me to say a few words. I have known Kimberly for 18 years. My husband and I moved here in July of 2004. So we were, I think, within a month of one another of getting to know the Adams family. And it's been such an incredible experience watching the growth under your leadership, really, in large part. And I think the experience that you brought from your background, career-wise, a high-level executive, we had the benefit of your knowledge, your expertise, your passion, your wisdom and all of those things. But yet, I think one of the biggest things that struck me was not only all of that expertise and technical knowledge and ability to bring people together, but just the sincerity, the level of genuineness and the offer of friendship to each and every person you've met. I think each person that's ever met Kimberly feels like they're her very best friend. And she makes us feel that way, but in many cases, you're able to just disperse that love for the community and for those that you meet. So you've been able to extend that to the business sector and made us, as a group, agree on things that maybe other people wouldn't be able to bring people together. I fondly call that herding cats. And you have that ability. So we have a resolution for you, the Board of Rancho California Water District, and so much has already been said, I'm just going to read the last part of it. And it says, "Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Directors of the Rancho California Water District honor and celebrate the vast legacy of leadership and care that Kimberly Adams has bestowed upon the Temecula Valley through her investment and passion for the region." And I think that says it very well. So thank you for that. Thank you for your friendship over the years. And it's an honor to be here.
Next up, Sharice Manning, Visit Temecula Valley.
Hi, Kimberly. It's such a pleasure to get, to come out and represent Visit Temecula Valley and just say a few words about what you've done for the organization. I was the OG. I was one of the first board members that was involved with the Visitors Bureau at the time. And I actually interviewed Kimberly. And I remember walking away from the meeting thinking, this woman is going to change our destination and look at what you've done. You really have. From where we were when we first set in that meeting and we said, we have some seed money, Pachanga participated, the city's on board, and what are we going to do with that? And she said, I know exactly what we're going to do with that. And it started from there. And you can see all of the projects as we've worked through the years that you've been involved in. The TID, the TMD. She said, funding is super important and we need to make sure that this organization is going to stand the test of time. And she made sure that we were financially solvent as we went through. She sat in board meetings with us where we had a board who was hands-on at the time, where we literally were cut and pasting our logo because we didn't like the way that it looked. And she supported us. But I think her best quality is how she can bring everyone together. She can talk to the board, she can talk to the city, the county, the state of California, Pachanga, Old Town, wine growers. And she has an ability to have everybody come to the table and hear each other out and just lead through that. So between her vision and her heart, I also had the pleasure of getting to know her on a personal basis, as a friend, a mentor, a fellow bear mom, as we traveled with sports. It was really a unique opportunity. And I think our entire board really wants you to know how much we appreciate your heart and energy and time that you put into your job, because it wasn't just a job for her. It was really her passion. So on behalf of the board, we do have a certificate of recognition for you. We did do a party earlier. Again, no, nothing against that. But I would like to recognize you for your 18 years of service to Visit Temecula Valley. We would not be where we are today without your leadership. So thank you.
Also like to mention the flowers at the dais are also for you, Kimberly. They're from Visit California's CEO and President Carolyn Batata, who is very sorry she could not be here this evening. All right. Next up, Ken Westmeyer, Ellis Hospitality.
I just came for a picture. This is the longest I've seen her hold still in about 18 years. But I'm here representing the, damn it, hospitality industry. Talk about herding cats. And she was very honest when she said, it's not easy. You put a room of hospitalions together and heads are going to clash and ideas are going to exchange and maybe some arguments or maybe some discussions, we'll put it. But through the whole thing, we always turn to you, like everybody says, to be the one that brings us all together and realize that people can have different opinions, but there's one way to go for the best of the organization and the best of the valley. We also promised Erin we were going to give you back at some point. So Erin, I hope you're appreciative of the time. That was a tough one. She tried to give us a letter saying she's leaving and we were like holding on to her cooktails because we know what's going to happen. Something else awesome and wonderful and big is going to happen in your life. But the hotels wouldn't be where we're at now, today, expanding the way we are without your guidance, without your support.
And next up, Brooke Nun with Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce.
Hi, Kimberly. I wrote a few things down that I'm going to read. It is an honor to recognize you for your retirement from Visit Temecula Valley. I don't know how many of you know that Visit Temecula Valley actually started at the Temecula Chamber. It started as a committee. Our former president, CEO, Alice Sullivan hired Kimberly 18 years ago, which is amazing. She started in a small office in the Chamber. As you can see today, Visit Temecula Valley has grown into a very successful organization, supporting our local economy and workforce. Kimberly had the vision to take Temecula tourism to the next level. I asked Alice what words she would use to describe Kimberly, and she said, talented, inspiring, and a visionary. And I would add humble and a trailblazer. On behalf of the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce, we want to thank Kimberly for her tremendous contributions to tourism in our valley. We wish her many years of relaxation and endless free time to enjoy the things that make her happy. Congratulations.
Phil Bailey, Temecula Valley Wine Growers Association.
So Kimberly, it's a long way from Legoland, huh? That's what I remember first meeting you. Where did you work before? Legoland. So anyway, it's just been a really wonderful association that you've, that we've had with you, the wine growers have had. I, probably a lot of you don't know, but it isn't just the hotel, Visit Temecula Valley. We now have another organization that's called the Temecula Valley Wine and Agricultural Heritage District, where 1% of all wine country sales, wine, restaurants in wine country, weddings and so on, goes into another fund that's just like this one. And that was, I think, seven or eight years ago, Kimberly came to us and said, you guys really, really ought to be doing this. You ought to be collecting something on your winery receipts here and start your own business improvement district. And we, we had one abortive attempt at that. We hadn't all done our homework properly and, but about, let's see, in just about the year before the pandemic started, we revived that. We were able to get the support of all the, all the wine growers. And that was instituted in April 1st, 2021. And that is bringing in about another million and a half dollars that we have to tell the world that wines are made here in Temecula that can compare favorably to any in the world. So that's the emphasis of our business improvement district, to go really fit in nicely with the emphasis of bringing people to Temecula to enjoy all the, all the things in Temecula. So we have a little basket for you. I don't have a fancy proclamation or anything like that, but I just, again, you've been fantastic.
Next up, Ross Jackson, Old Town Temecula Association.
I'd like to start out and say something from a person that is one of my favorite heroes, and it's Albert Einstein. Albert Einstein says, "A leader is one who, out of clutter, brings simplicity; out of discord, brings harmony; out of difficulty, brings opportunity." We thank you for all of your service that you've done for Old Town Temecula, the merchants, the support that you've given us as a group to help us improve our ability to support the merchants of Old Town Temecula. It is with a great honor that we had your wisdom during this 18 years. I've had it for the last six or seven. I've actually known you since, oh, 2012, '11, somewhere around there, along with everybody else on this board. I personally feel that your leadership is going to be sorely missed and that Scott has big shoes to fill. I wasn't going to say heels, but he's going to have some big shoes to fill. But I know he is going to be able to provide the inspiration to Old Town Merchants Association to help us grow as we intended for this city to grow. And with that, I'd like to give you a, I lost the frame. It's a outstanding commitment, leadership, creativity, stewardship, and the love of our town. We cannot fully express the gratitude we have for your efforts, which have transformed Old Town into a magical place that it is today. We are forever grateful. Thank you very much.
Next up is Connie Stouffer with the Economic Development Coalition.
I'm not sure if it's possible to say anything that hasn't already been said, but I'm pleased to be here on behalf of the Economic Development Coalition to express our sincere gratitude for Kimberly Adams' many years of service. The economic impact of this successful tourism promotion has been immeasurable. The hundreds of businesses that have benefited, the thousands of jobs that have been created, the countless lifelong memories that people have been able to create here in our valley, and the heightened quality of life that all of us get to enjoy and the people who wish to be able to live here get to enjoy as well, will continue to create many memories and a lasting positive impact on the valley. So I just want to thank you. And the only regret that I have is that I haven't had a longer opportunity to get to work with you, but I want to wish you the best success in whatever adventure awaits you.
Well, it's, it's a great honor to just be here to thank you for all the wonderful things you've done for the valley. You have a tremendous ability, as you've heard today, a tremendous ability just to see the big picture, help guide this community to all the great things that VTV has been able to accomplish. You've, you've really put your fingerprint on this. Thank you. You've really put your fingerprint on this community. I mean, it's going to, and it's going to last, you know, long outlast us, for sure. So I just want to say thank you. We appreciate, I very much appreciate all your counsel over the, over the years. I remember, as Stu said, I remember the day when Temecula was on the map, on the news. I pointed it out to my wife and said, look, there's Temecula, we're there. You've had so many amazing impacts on this community. Like I said, it's just going to, it's going to last forever. And I just want to say thank you. Thank you for your counsel. You are probably one of the most intelligent people I know. And I mean that sincerely. You know, I remember when I think, before I came on the board, you and I sat down for lunch and we talked about VTV and my joining the board for a little bit. And we talked about strategy and some things. It was very apparent to me in that conversation that you were the smartest person at the table. So, but I want to just thank you. You, you're an amazing person. You've done amazing things here and it's going to last for a long time for us to enjoy. Thank you.
And I understand you also opened up a line of credit for her at the, at the mall. Thank you. Chris Gray, Western Riverside Council of Governments. Come on down.
Mayor Ronstadt, I'm Chris Gray with the Western Riverside Council of Governments. I want to talk about vision. And it's not, it's very rare to find someone who has a vision. And you had a vision for the Temecula Valley, but you also made it happen. And that is truly rare professionally. Professionally, personally, you see people with vision, but someone who has a vision and someone who can get it done and has made the Temecula Valley into what is not just a regional destination, but an international destination. People from all over the world come to the Temecula Valley. Three million people a year are generating over a billion dollars of economic impact. It doesn't just benefit the city, it benefits the entire region. And so therefore, I come bearing a proclamation from the Western Riverside Council of Governments, acknowledging and thanking Kimberly Adams for her service to the region. And I thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight.
And WR Cog worked out a deal with transportation so you get free fast track for the rest of your life. All right. Kim Cousins, Lake Elsinore Valley Chamber of Commerce. Did she just say happy birthday?
She did. It was yesterday, but at my age, you don't count them anymore.
We might all have to sing.
So, good evening, City Council, staff and citizens of Temecula, and greetings from the Lake Elsinore Valley, your neighbors. As we all know, we are gathered here this evening to say goodbye to a colleague who is leaving us in great hands, to start another phase of her life, and to use this opportunity to express our profound gratitude for her hard work and dedication, expanding the tourism reach of Southwest Riverside County. She is a remarkable colleague and friend who has spent over 18 years at work executing the roles that she designed to make a very real big difference in the tourism industry. She is active, cheerful, productive, innovative, industrious, honest, friendly, reliable, persistent, resourceful, talented, loyal, self-disciplined, and broad-minded. These are a few of some of the positive qualities and personality traits that best describe our Kimberly. Today, I'm happy and confident enough to say that we are in great hands with the job without stress. Your uncommon contributes towards our success and your outstanding performance will stay in our hearts forever. Although your leaving us makes us sad, the sweet memories of working with you will be remembered always. With a grateful heart, I say thank you for making Visit Temecula Valley a multi-million-dollar, billion-dollar industry, and bringing us along for the ride on the I-15 corridor. Because there is spillage into Skydive Elsinore and the motocross track from your advertisement, and we appreciate that. I wish you good luck and all the best wishes in your new path forward. And one word that sums up Kimberly's efforts is elevating. So I do have a plaque from the Board of Directors, "Lake Elsinore Valley Chamber of Commerce presents their certificate to Kimberly Adams. Visit Temecula Valley for Elevating Tourism in Southwest Riverside County."
And Carmella with Murrieta Temecula Group. Oh, that is not Carmella.
So Kimberley. Yeah, uh-oh. I'm going to say what everybody here is thinking. Number one, this is a lot, a lot of recognition. And number two, you deserve it like crazy. You really do. Kimberly has made such an impact, not only on Temecula, but on our region. And what a lot of people don't know, and I work closely with her on this, she is respected at a state level and has done a lot for our entire state of California in terms of tourism promotion. It's phenomenal. You know, Stu, we are a very small destination when it comes to our budget spend within California. California is one of the biggest nation states in the world. We spend $200 million as a state on tourism promotion. We spend a fraction of that here. But you said, and I remember this, the bumper stickers that said, "Where the hell is Temecula?" Well, the other destinations within the state of California, something that we've been hearing more and more, they're saying, "What the hell is Temecula doing?" We have really made an impact throughout the whole state. And we used to be, before you came along, we were a footnote in the story of Temecula. And now tourism is definitely a headline. We respect that. I'm here actually on behalf of MTG, a group of community leaders that is honoring you along with everyone else. We didn't want to miss out either. But also, I've worked with Kimberly on the board with Visit Temecula Valley for years and years, and I can finally admit this before I give you this plaque and give you a hug. We have overworked you and underpaid you for years. Thank you so much.
All right. And was Ken Smith able to make it this evening? Wasn't sure. All right. Well, Ken says hi. So with that, everybody, let's go ahead and recess City Council meeting for a bit. Oh, I'm sorry, Melody. That's right. Melody with Melody's AdWorks. I'm sorry. Gosh, there you are. You're hiding.
I'm a writer, I recognize it. Actually, I'll try and go off the script because there's so many other things that everybody's already fit. One of the things I was told at your retirement party was that the one word you never use in a retirement tribute is the word "I." And it's very difficult to talk about Kimberly and not use the word "I" if you've worked with her, because she includes you in everything. And she had the most unusual task when we started out, for those that don't know, of taking all of us mavericks, that's what we're called now. It's a nicer word, but I think I would have called us individualist, opinionated, and unruly crowd. And she turned us all into leaders. And some of our leaders here are now leaders within the industry and on the Visit California and the higher level of boards. They are definitely farly, far highly more excelled than they probably ever thought they would be. And so that's number one. I want to thank you for that. But the other thing I want to do is I kind of want to go back a little bit about the Chamber of Commerce and the committee, because what people don't really understand about that committee is it was a subcommittee to the marketing committee of the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce. And at that time, in the mid-'90s, they were going to actually eliminate it because it was so dysfunctional. So we got together, some of the people on the committee, and somebody suggested that it needed to be a convention visitors bureau. And the first thing that I said, there's my "I," was, "We don't have a convention center." And Dave Wilson goes, "No, it's just a term. It's a marketing term. We can do this." And so they started the process of becoming not just a committee on their own, but eventually a council. And thank you to Pachanga and their generous donation and support to us, because that is how we managed to hire Kimberly. I got to meet Kimberly for the very first time at an event in the middle of Old Town. It was Temecula on Stage. And originally, my whole thought process in having a convention visitors bureau and somebody like that at the Chamber of Commerce was to dump a bunch of work, because I kept getting these phone calls from people in the L.A. markets that wanted to come and fly in a hot air balloon for free or whatever else. And they all had my phone number, because I did quite a few events in town. Well, all I really wanted to do was dump that on Kimberly. And what happened instead was, we're touring around the little venue known as Temecula on Stage, and her eyes lit up. And all of a sudden, everything flowed out of her mouth. She had all of these ideas and ways she could make the event grow, how she could make them bigger, what she could do. And that's when I knew there was a flaw in my thought process, but I was in trouble. Because for 18 years, she has made things grow and constantly pushed the bar for all of us. She's made everything a higher standard. And honestly, I don't know what we would have done without her. But there is one thing that I think about every year when I walk through here in Old Town at Christmas time, and that's when she came up with Temecula Childe. Temecula Childe was an event designed to improve visitation during our winter months. And what a lot of people like to say now is that snowy day, December 30th, 2014, was all because of Kimberly. And I tend to believe it, because quite frankly, all I've seen her do is create magic and make things grow. So thank you, Kimberly.
All right. Now we're going to go ahead and take that quick break across the way there. If we could have a picture of the family. I know there's also going to be an opportunity for folks. I see our former city manager here, Shawn Nelson. I see her father-in-law, too. So anybody who would like to say some extra words about Kimberly will be across the way there in the conference center here in just a second. But if we can get her family to join in for a picture, and then we'll take a break.
And then, Mr. Mayor, we can have Mrs. Adams go ahead and provide some final comments before she goes to recess. That would be great.
Hello. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here. I really appreciate all the kind words. For those of you that don't know my history, this is not the only 18 years. This is actually 40 years of working. And that picture up there that they had, when I turned 40, I took this job. So I've had three really successful careers. This one was the most exciting. I think my husband asked me to get off the road and try to find a job in Temecula, and I couldn't figure out what the heck I would do here, as I worked for LEGO and traveled internationally. And for 18 years, I worked for the San Diego Zoo and Wally Island Park. So I worked with animals, I worked with children, and then I came to a destination who wanted to bring a bunch of visitors. I could not figure out how we were going to do that. But thankfully, with the talented, you know, board members and staff, I mean, as you know, I did not do all this on my own. And Alice Sullivan, who hired me, and Shreece Manning, they were the first two that kind of believed in me and couldn't understand why I would want to leave a global job and come to my hometown of Temecula. It took a little bit of time for me, but it was probably the best decision I ever made, you know, to come home and be here. And I knew it would be this amazing. There's no doubt in my mind from when I first stepped my foot in the Chamber of Commerce that I could see the vision. And it's because of the people of Temecula and the partners with all the city council and the mayors that have been supportive for the community and also for Pachanga, who has been instrumental from the beginning. They always said, yes, what can we do to be at the table? The Wine Growers Association and all the growers and vintners and winemakers, and everyone had the belief, which I'm telling you, anything can happen. Just stay positive, continue to work together. We have a great leader now representing Visit Temecula Valley, which is Scott Wilson. He's going to do an amazing job. He brings a lot of talent. And it's just going to take some time to meet all of you and figure out like how we can continue to make this place even better. I always say, the best is yet to come. But again, thank you, everyone, for all your support over the last 18 years. You will see me in the community. It'll just be in a little different role. And again, thank you. I appreciate all your kind words. And thank you for being here. Really appreciate it.
All right, let's go get some cookies. All right. Well, that was exactly 10 minutes. Thank you all. All right. So next up, we're going to go a little bit out of order here. And we're going to move up the item for board and commission appointments, since I know many of you are here for that. So we don't want to have you sit through the whole rest of our meeting. So the process for that is fairly simple. We're going to move through each of our boards and commissions. We have two vacancies for Community Service Commission, two for Planning Commission, two for Public Traffic Safety Commission, and three for the Ready Commission. We have a binder full of applications from folks who have applied to those commissions. And then we will ask, starting with the Community Service Commission, those folks who did apply to come, and if they are here this evening, to speak. And they each have five minutes total in which to address the council. And we also have the opportunity to ask questions if we like. Also want to let folks know, because we know that this happened during the holiday sort of travel season and everything else, and we've been down this road before that, you know, just if folks aren't here, we do have all of their application materials. We do read all of it very thoroughly. And, you know, just for those folks who are traveling or had other reasons for not being here, we don't count that against you for not being here this evening. So with that, let's go ahead and get started with the process. And we can have our first folks from Community Services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate you providing the brief staff report.
Staff report, yeah. I'm on it.
Thank you so much. And the only thing I would add to that is that the application process was a publicly accessible and open process. They had 60 days, folks had 60 days, to go ahead and submit their applications pursuant to the city council adopted policy for the annual boards and commission recruitment process. We actually, as you indicated, we have 29 applicants that we started with approximately 35, and then some folks withdrew and some folks lived outside of the city's jurisdiction. And so we are now down to 29. While the applicants are encouraged to attend and provide an up-to-five-minute presentation, they are not mandated to do so. And with that, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go ahead and alphabetically call up the applicants. And then the city council will go ahead, and Mr. Mayor, we'll turn it over to you so you can facilitate the discussion, first Community Services, then Planning Commission, then Public Traffic Safety Commission, and then Ready Commission.
Great.
All right. We will start with Edward Ackerman. Welcome, Mr. Ackerman. You have up to five minutes.
Just like school, Ackerman goes first. Well, good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, Mr. City Manager, and support city staff. My name is, well, I'd appreciate the opportunity to present myself as an applicant for the position of Public Traffic Safety Commission. My name is Ed Ackerman. I've been a resident of Temecula for over 34 years. I was born and raised in the city of Glendale. And when I was four years old, I actually took a fall that went two years before my parents realized that I was limping when I was in first grade. I ended up having a hip issue that I had to go to a, well, I had to wear a special brace, and I had to go to a special school for kids with handicaps, I'm sorry, with disabilities. I returned to public school after three years, and the doctors told my parents that I can't play sports in high school, I can't be in the military, and I can't do a physical career. So all that being said, they also said, when I'm in my 40s, my hip is going to seize up from arthritis. So I went to public high school and tried out for the tennis team, didn't make it. And I never had military in my plan, but I worked a career as a firefighter. And that was a great thing for me. I worked two seasons with the Forest Service in my early days, and I was hired by the city of Glendale in 1980. I worked 30 years with the Glendale Fire Department, which is a Class I fire department rating. And the city of Glendale was a council manager government, just like Temecula. I went through the ranks firefighter. I was a fire engineer for seven years, drove the fire engine through busy streets. And I was a captain for 19 years. Of those 19 years, nine of those, I went to paramedic school and was a paramedic captain. I interacted in my duties with other city divisions, including the Police Department, the Traffic Engineering, Street Department, and Legal, to name a few. I understand and demonstrated the importance of public trust and quality customer service. Other responsibilities I had while I was a firefighter, I developed, implemented, and supervised the Fire Explorer program. supervised the Fire Explorer program. I was a CPR instructor, and I was a critical incident stress debriefer, peer support person. I could work 95 miles away from here for 22 years, knowing that my family was safe in this town of Temecula. In 1995, I wasn't satisfied just being a firefighter. I started a window cleaning business here in town. It was a customer service-based business. I was licensed in the city of Temecula, and I worked most of the housing tracts within our city. I have a good understanding of the roads and traffic flows in our city, and I washed windows for 20 years. Since retiring, I've volunteered with the food distribution at what used to be the Rescue Mission. It's now the Community Mission of Hope through Rancho Community Church. I'm married, been married for 37 years. My wife, Rhana, she's a retired hospice RN. We moved to Temecula in 1988, back when it was Rancho, California, comma, California. The population was 16,000 then, and there's now, as we know, there's over 112,000. There was one signal and two supermarkets. It was a small-town feel, and everyone knew everyone. It was a different time. We raised three kids. Our family grew with the city of Temecula. I coached their soccer and baseball teams many years ago. In fact, I remember our kids saying, I can't wait till I grow up so I can move out of this town. They all live within six miles of us.
Yeah.
And they're now raising their families here. We have 10 grandchildren, and I must say, we are thrilled with our beautiful parks that our grandkids play sports in.
Sorry, your time is up. If you could summarize.
Okay, well, summarize, firm handshake, and a smile goes a long way with me. Glendale was my home growing up, Temecula is my hometown. I believe my experience will allow me to be a productive and positive contributor to the Public Safety Commission. And thank you for your consideration.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. The next, excuse me, the next speaker is Robert Bender. Robert? Yes, this is alphabetical, so you can come on up by name, not by commission. Goodbye, Mr. Nelson. We see you in the back.
All right. Good evening, council members, Mayor Ron and staff. Really quick, Mr. Adams, I'm going to tell you a quick story that I told Jessica during break. My father-in-law in Michigan, we were visiting, his cousin from Tennessee who was traveling happened to be there, and it just goes to show how wonderful of a job your wife has done. Came by, and we happened to be there, came by and said hello. I've met him once, maybe twice, in my life. And he was asking, where do you guys live? And I was saying, oh, we live in Southern California. And he said, oh, we're going to make a trip out there. We want to go to this new wine country area. I think it's called Temecula. And I was, my father-in-law and I looked at each other, and we were like, no way, that's where I live. He didn't even believe me. I had to show him my driver's license so he'd believe me. So whatever your wife's doing, she's doing a great job doing it, because somebody, a family member in Tennessee knows about this wonderful city. So with that, council members, Mayor Ron, my name is Bobby Bender. My wife and I have lived in Temecula here for five years now. We have two wonderful kids, both of them attend Crown Hill Elementary School. I'm a Senior Private Client Advisor and Associate Vice President of Investments with Wells Fargo. My office is actually just across the freeway in the Tower Office Building. I'm actually one of the lucky ones that gets to live in this beautiful community and work here as well. In my profession, I analyze just about everything. I analyze macro markets, micro economies, private credit, obviously, public markets, capital markets, and really, a lot lately has been analyzing the tone of the Fed presidents whenever they tell us how many rate hikes they're going to give us at the FOMC meetings. I'm thrilled to be here once again, standing in front of you all. Last year, I came before council with hopes of being appointed to the Planning Commission. I spoke about concerns related to tapering population effect that I had for the city. I spoke about how economic development and investment is most essential to the growth of our city. Still believe that today, and how what we are doing today is going to benefit us in the future. I also mentioned a high concern about rental inflation and how trends were getting ready to hit these people that do rent in our communities particularly hard. I met with a couple of you separately to get a better understanding of what it is that you're looking for, what it is that we actually are doing on a day-to-day basis. So over the last year, I've spent time learning and growing. I've become a member of our Chamber of Commerce, which has been pretty eye-opening. I'm also actively pursuing a membership in a very interesting business group, the Marietta Temecula Group, thanks to a sponsorship by Jonathan Ingram. I've learned even more. I've learned that a good planning commissioner looks for problems before they arrive. I understand that the job is to ensure and implement the vision that you council members lay out. One must understand the general plan and zoning. I understand that Planning Commission doesn't set or make policy. So my plan here, my plan is to study some of our most critical areas and zones and understand what sensitivities there might be, so that as we work together to grow this community, we work as a fully informed public servant. I intend to offer wisdom to plans. I will be focused in working with council to materialize future goals that derive the highest-quality types of revenues, like transit occupancy tax, retail sales tax. It would be a privilege to serve this community. With that, I thank you guys for your time, and I'll leave this open for any questions that any of you will have.
All right. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Maricel Braga, and I did receive an email from her earlier indicating that she wasn't going to be able to make it. So I will move to Stephen Castillo. Stephen Castillo? Okay. Ernest Castro?
Thank you for having me here this evening. I appreciate the time. I wanted to use my time to provide more information on why I want to be part of the Community Services Commission. My wife and I moved to Temecula in September 2021 after retiring. I had 35 years with the federal government and the intelligence community and the military. And then we spent five years looking for a place to retire. We looked all over the country, mostly in the southeast, but once we saw Temecula, we found this was the place we wanted to retire. We found that Temecula provided us with the lifestyle we wanted. We liked the small-town feel, but with the amenities we wanted in a day-to-day life. We recognize the city's efforts to build parks, bike lanes, and green living space. In the year plus we've been here, we have come to love the city and would like to contribute to the city's efforts moving forward. We made many connections here in the last year through engaging with the community. I volunteer two days a week at the Mission of Hope, and I'm also a member of Bike Temecula Valley. I've attended many events with Bike Temecula Valley, such as the Fourth of July Parade, the pump track opening, and the opening of the Santa Gutruhdis Trail. And we've come to see the community spirit in Temecula, and I'd like to contribute to making that move forward. I feel that my 35 years of government experience with the federal government and the military will benefit the city. I have extensive experience in program management and acquisition management. I understand what it takes to manage a program from beginning to end and to include resource management challenges. I would like to couple that experience with my enjoyment of community services in Temecula. I'm a frequent user of the bike lanes and parks in Temecula. I understand that as a relatively new resident of Temecula, it's incumbent on me to learn what the community issues are and what they want the city council and the commissions to accomplish. And so if selected, I will do my best to represent the city residents on the commission. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions? Jessica.
So you have a great background. So thank you for sharing that. What would you say are your gifts and talents? What are your strengths that you're going to bring to the commission?
I think it's the extensive experience I have in program management on how to take something from an idea to a completion. I've seen, I've worked many startups with the federal government, and I've also worked in production environments. So I know what it takes to go from an idea to actually making something happen.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Wonderful.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. And I actually missed Ryan Bradley. Ryan, if you're here.
Thank you so much. I was like, oops, did I do something wrong? So, good evening, esteemed council members. Thank you for the opportunity for me to be here today and share a little bit about myself. I'm Ryan Bradley, and I've been lucky to call this valley home since I moved here in 2015. I'm a San Diego native, so born and raised, which I know is a little bit rare. But, you know, I truthfully moved here from Chino Hills, really expecting to move back to San Diego in a couple of years. But I didn't count that I would truly fall in love with the valley. And so I find that the uniqueness of this valley makes me proud to call it home. I was thinking about that as I drove in today and really loved seeing the chilled had all been set up. I think our valley is especially magical this time of year. I always love to tell people to come visit because it's beautiful. So to that, I say San Diego, who. But I've also long felt that if you're a part of a community, it's very important to give back. So I think being a part of the community and being a part of what actually makes the community function and understanding more about it is vitally important. So I don't want to just be a resident. I also want to make sure that I am a part of making this place better. And so I, on that note, have been the president of my HOA for like three years now. So, you know, please save the tomatoes. But I enjoy that part of it. I've also been on a nonprofit healthcare board for about 10 years. I work in the insurance space, really focused on health. So I have been very lucky to have a variety of different hats within that space. And so I actually get to sit on a nonprofit board, which allows me to really work on different things that I care about, like health equity and those things. And then I recently spent the last seven years helping to put on San Diego's LGBT pride. I actually was the coordinator in charge of putting the festival together. So we are one of the largest prides in the country. I think we're third. So putting a festival of that size together is no small feat, but it was pretty neat to have an entire team of volunteers and put it together and really see it be rewarding for the folks that participated and joined. It was, I like to say that makes it all worth it, although at 4:00 in the morning on Friday before it starts, I don't know if I would take such a positive tone, but I have a more positive tone after it gets underway. So, you know, one of the things that really drew me to the Ready Commission was really, you know, thinking as an LGBT resident of this town, how I could lend my unique perspective and skills to helping to make sure that this is a wonderful community for everybody that lives here. And I'm so proud of the steps that I've seen our town take towards making diversity and equity and inclusion a more formal part of the way that we think about our future. And so that kind of approach is what really made me say, you know what, I should get involved. I think I've got a unique set of skills that I can help to make this better for everybody. So I appreciate so much the time today, and I'm happy to address any questions that the council has.
All right, any questions?
Awesome. Thank you for your time.
I have a quick one for you. Hang on. So on your application, it's both Planning Commission and Ready Commission that you were applying for?
Yeah, I'm actually good with either. I'm good with either of them. But I would truthfully say the Ready Commission is probably more what I would do. But Planning Commission is something that's also very interesting to me. Stu, I think you probably got really sick of emails from me asking about things like interchanges and things like that. I was always like, when are we going to landscape the interchange exiting Temecula Parkway? So sick of hearing, I know it's coming because I've read all of those. So, yeah, but either of them.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ryan. Next speaker is Stasia Deutsch. I hope I pronounced that right, Stasia. Or maybe Stacia Deutsch? Oh, okay, good, Stacia Deutsch. Welcome.
Hi, thanks. Yeah, it's Stacia Deutsch, and I'd like to be on the Ready Commission, and this is why. My journey to Temecula began in 2017. My husband had already joined the proud equestrian community here, and he was commuting from Orange County, where we'd lived for 20 years. In a blink, all the kids were off to college, and it was time for a change. We came to look at houses. It took me about an hour before I blurted out that Temecula was not for me. While Jim already had an amazing group of friends, I looked around and said, there are no Jews here. I cannot live without community. There might have been a few tears. And it took him a year to get up the nerve to ask me again. We all know it is not true that there are no Jews here. There's a small community spread over four synagogues, maybe 50 to 75 affiliated families in total. Those are the ones who identify. I am certain that there are many more here that find their way without joining formal Jewish institutions. But for me, as an ordained Reform Rabbi, Temecula is a complicated place. I feel my minority status all the time and have begun to seek out friendships amongst other minorities in order to find the welcoming population that I had hoped for. Yes, I'm a Rabbi, but I've created a career for myself writing children's books. And not to give you my whole resume, you can just Google me. It's kind of embarrassing, but it's cool. And I love what I do. When I first heard about the Ready Commission, I thought, this is the place where I can bring my education, my writing skills, and my interests to help ensure that no one else drives to Temecula looking for a home and leaves feeling that this is not the right place for them and their family. So the first thing I did when I moved to Temecula was to join the Temecula Valley Historical Society. I love dressing up and doing the laundry like they did in the 1800s. The Historical Society is made of really good people who love this city dearly. And I'm going to toss out here that they need more volunteers. For me, I love the society extra for making me aware of Louis Wolf. Whether he was a great guy or not, we can debate, but he was Jewish. And when I read about him, I feel a kinship to this man who, like my ancestors, fled persecution to come to America and, like me, made Temecula their home. I like to learn about the past in order to better understand where we are today and to use those resources for the future. I believe the Ready Commission understands that, too. We are here building a modern community on the shoulder of the diverse population that settled here. Blacks, LGBTQ, indigenous, immigrants, those with disabilities, and those with special needs. We all want to know that the programs coming through our city have been vetted to make sure that we are included, and more than that, to make sure that we are wanted. The biggest little temple for Jews in the valley is in Marietta. Every couple of months, I am not kidding, a rock goes through our window. We gather and we ask ourselves, is the broken glass antisemitism? Is it a robber? Or is it just someone looking for a warm place to stay? And I know that city council members here are informed and helpful every time it happens, so I thank you for that. Currently, the very few Jews of our community are talking about building a fence, a huge fence, an unwelcoming fence. We already have security during prayer services, but that doesn't seem to matter to rock growers. What more can we do? I get sad about it, and I wonder, why did I leave the large Jewish community I lived in and come here? But then I go to Vale Ranch, and I stand where Louis Wolf stood with his wife, Ramona. Or you know what? I go to a really amazing black woman-owned hair salon for the curls. Or I have brunch at a drag show. My neighbor is from India. My contractor is My neighbor is from India, my contractor is from Iran, and many of us have kids on the autism spectrum. Diversity is everywhere I look. I think about the day that Jim brought me here to look for a house. It has all led to this moment. I want to serve on the Ready Commission because no one should ever leave the Temecula Valley feeling that this is not the place for them because there is no community that fits their needs. I am aware that the Ready Commission isn't tasked with solving all race, equity, diversity, and inclusion issues. But the commission is a place to start and to evaluate our programs. And from this space, we can shout to the hills that surround us. We are diverse, and we are mighty. We are here, we have always been here, and everyone is welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thanks so much.
Next, we have Stephanie Hernandez-Dawson, followed by Edward Hubler. So Stephanie? Hi, welcome, Stephanie. No worries.
Hello. I'd like to start off by telling you a little bit about myself and my background. I moved to Temecula in 2014. I was born and raised in Los Angeles, two parents who came to this country in the 80s from El Salvador. My parents worked hard to achieve the American dream, and I'm proud to say that they accomplished just that. Now, as a parent myself, I believe in the idea that we can all do our part to make our community a better one and to each, and that each contribution helps make a better future for our children. Over the years, I have contributed my efforts into organizations such as PTA, PSA, and donated my photography services to local businesses and to organizations such as the TVHS Orchestra. Currently, I serve as a board member of my HOA and as a member of the TVUSD Measure Y Citizens Oversight Committee. In the last few years, through homeschooling my children, I have devoted myself to creating parent-led programs for elementary-age children and for teens. Now, besides my varied work experience and volunteer experience, as a first-generation American and a Hispanic, I am someone who can help bring representation to our community. As of 2020, our city is made up of 30.1% Hispanics and growing. We are quite a diverse culture. But having been born and raised in Los Angeles and having lived there for a big portion of my adult life, I can say I have a big, pretty good perspective to bring to our community here in Temecula and would love the opportunity to do so. Thank you. I'm open to questions now.
Any questions? All right. Thanks so much.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Edward Hubler? Edward Hubler? Okay. Jessica James? Jessica James? Jeff Kingsburg?
Well, good evening. I was here last year at this time in this capacity, and I am applying once again for a seat on the Community Services Commission. I can now say that I have had the opportunity to meet each of you, at least briefly, and with some of you, I've had the opportunity for multiple interactions. So it is nice to at least know the people I'm speaking to. And I also want to say that I recently completed eight years myself in an elected leadership role, and I can certainly empathize with many of the challenges you folks face on the council and respect your work as well as the work of all the city staff. Last time I spoke about my career and how I have sought to foster civic participation for those that were under my leadership, both my students of 27 years and then the fellow educators that I led for eight years. I'm not going to take you through that again tonight. I've embedded some examples in my application, but I will say that I believe my 35-year record as a community member is solid, both professionally and personally, and my skillset and experience do match well to the Community Services Commission. I have followed the work of the commission and its connection to both city staff and the city council, and by doing so, I do have a few observations to share. At the October 10th Community Services Commission meeting, commissioners received a report regarding the development of the City Quality of Life Master Plan, or QLMP. And a couple of things in that report did stand out to me. First, as an educator, the continued development of career technical education programs, or CTE, is important, as well as the interest in expanding the number of participants in the City of Temecula Youth and Government Program. As someone who promoted participation in that program myself for many years and participated as an instructor, I do see myself as a potential resource to help that program grow. The second thing that came out of that report was the stated interest in extensive resident communication and outreach. And I was encouraged to hear that because that speaks to continuous improvement. And that was mentioned as an opportunity by the city planner, Matt Peters, also at the city council meeting earlier this month, when the city received and approved the QLMP plan. And as a longtime resident, my family and I have participated in several activities and programs. I can attest to the impressive breadth and quality of programs and activities that Temecula offers. With that, I'm going to share a few thoughts that I might bring as a Community Services Commissioner to the body. And in that, I would say that I brought this tonight. This is familiar, I'm sure, right? The Community Services Guide, and it's a great resource. I think I signed up for my pickleball class, you know, with this information. So that was great. I'm ready for the intermediate class now as we turn the corner here into the new year. And I think it's a great resource. I also am curious to wonder if residents might benefit from additional communication, maybe more frequent communication in smaller bites. This sort of communication could contain perhaps new activity opportunities, new class opportunities, or maybe classes that have enrollment vacancies, alerts. And I know there are mechanisms for folks to opt in to that information. I know the information is out there, but then I, again, I analyze everything, and I say, well, how can we increase the percentage of residents that do opt in? And I'm sure you folks have done that as well. I also like the idea of perhaps resident focus groups. I know Mr. Peters spoke about that, working with the younger demographic to get information on the QLMP. And bringing people together and face-to-face and getting two-way feedback between the city and residents, I think, would be a way to grow that, and I would certainly encourage and support that. So that's kind of my outlook coming into the position. In sum, the city has done a fantastic job. I'm a longtime resident here. I love the emblem there, the old traditions, the new opportunities. It would truly be an honor to serve the city as it moves forward in implementing the 2040 Quality of Life Master Plan. I would like to maintain our healthy, livable, and sustainable city and as well continue to strive for continuous improvement. So with that, I would be willing to clarify anything from my comments tonight or my submitted application. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? All right.
Thank you again.
Next, we have Catherine Leff. Welcome, Catherine.
This needs to be taller. So I just want to say good evening, city council, staff members, and members of the community. First, I want to thank the city council for creating the Ready Commission, which was needed to increase awareness and processes within the city. So thank you for that. And I also want to thank those that have served on the commission these past couple of years. I really appreciate your hard work, and I know it wasn't easy getting this off the ground. Also, I want to thank you for inviting me to speak here today. I plan to tell you first a little bit about myself and then why I'm interested in serving on the commission. I have lived in Temecula for 18 years, moving here from Irvine and raising two boys from the ages of three and one as a single parent. My oldest is now 33 and works as a digital media manager for a startup company up in Pleasanton, and my youngest is a law clerk for a federal judge in Puerto Rico. He previously served two years in the Peace Corps in the Dominican Republic and passed the California bar exam this past July. Me, I am the owner of Soaring High Counseling here in Temecula, where I work as a licensed marriage family therapist. I completed my PhD in psychology with a concentration in mental health policy and practice, and I work with diverse populations. I have worked with diverse populations specializing in marriage and family therapy. I've worked with interracial LGBTQ couples and others who have come from all over the country and even the world. I am also an adjunct faculty professor at Pepperdine University, where I teach in the master's online program educating the future therapists of California. My students also make up a diverse population that I find very invigorating and enlightening. I have also served on the Board of the California Association of Marriage and Family Therapists, also known as CAMF, as Director-at-Large, Secretary, President-elect, and President. The association has over 32,000 members who work to advance the profession and to promote mental health for the people of California, including recently issuing a social policy statement on racism, racial trauma, and access to mental health care for Black, Indigenous, and people of color. This and other sociocultural statements can be viewed on the association website at CAMF.org. I am also the founder and past president of our local chapter, Southwest Riverside County CAMF, where we meet monthly at Richie's Diner to network and learn from relevant speakers from up and down the state. I founded this chapter in 2009 as a way for therapists in the area to connect and support each other as well as give back to our community. Additionally, in 2012, I traveled to South Africa to conduct research on intergenerational trauma for a PhD in international psychology, which was published in 2015. Now for why I am interested in serving on this commission. I want to serve on the Ready Commission because I believe I can make a difference based on my extensive education and experience in working with diverse populations. I clearly recognize that I am a privileged white person, but I also recognize that my education and unique experiences may offer a valuable perspective. This perspective also comes from having previously worked for over 20 years as an emergency response child protection social worker for LA, Orange, Riverside counties, which also allowed me to work in diverse communities to provide protection for our most vulnerable children. Although I have loved my experiences of living and working in Temecula, I continue to look for ways to grow in my work and in my community. I consider Temecula a relatively young city with ever-changing demographics. This can be exciting, but it can also present with unique challenges as different cultures come together to live in this beautiful city. But I love it. I love walking around Harveston Lake and seeing families from diverse cultures and hearing various languages spoken, which is most prevalent on a warm Sunday afternoon, if you ever walk around there. As we discuss race, equity, diversity, and inclusion, we need to also know if Temecula residents feel a sense of belongingness. Everyone who lives, works, shops, and pays taxes in Temecula needs to feel they belong here and are accepted for who they are, no matter their culture, race, ethnicity, gender, age, sexual identity, religion, ableness, or mental health status. It would therefore be an honor to serve on this commission and contribute to moving the needle forward. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right. Any questions? All right. Thanks so much.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Next is David Lombardo. David Lombardo. Amanda Matmala?
Good evening, council members and staff. My name is Ashley Maddox, and I'd like to use this time to share with everyone what makes Temecula the best place to raise a family. I grew up in Marietta. Back in 1997, we didn't have the full range of community services and programs that families can enjoy today. What we did have is a small-town sense of community. My brother, parents, and I connected with our community through music and marching band. I met my future husband, David, at a rehearsal with the Temecula Valley Winds Community Band. We married in 2010 and moved away from the valley for a number of years. By 2016, we were fortunate enough to be able to be in a position where we could afford to come back to Temecula. We also found out that, surprise, we were expecting triplets. So we made the decision to put our roots down in the valley where our families still lived. Marietta is my hometown, but Temecula is my forever home. Our first taste of the many amazing things the city has to offer was baby storytime at Grace Melman Library with a little help from Grandma. We have joined in the Easter egg hunts at Birds All Sports Park every year we could since 2018. Our family has adopted a city park, which we visit every month for a cleanup day. In May 2019, we were ready to try some city classes. I signed the kids up for junior jumpers gymnastics at the CRC. In July 2019, we hunted for Deka at the mall and then got to meet her. I got a babysitter so I could go to the Community Services Master Plan Citizens Workshop. I was a Facebook contest winner for seats at the Christmas parade in 2019, and we have attended as many other Christmas and Fourth of July parades as we could since the kids loved them so much. COVID hit in 2020 and everything shut down, but we stayed connected with city activities by doing the Temecula Cares 21-day challenge, seeing Santa when he drove by our house, and having our front yard egged for Easter. In-person classes came back in 2021, and I registered the kids for Bear Cub University and swim lessons at the CRC. The tree lighting at the duck pond is one of our yearly traditions, and we always get a family picture with Santa. This year was our first seeing the fireworks at Ronald Reagan Sports Park. We have attended countless city events, from first responders' events to ribbon cuttings. Each year, the kids pick a park to visit and take birthday photos at. I'm so glad that when we look back at the photos every year, we can recall the great memories that we've made at our amazing parks. Together, we have visited every city park. I have been an active participant in all things community services for the last five years, and I would be proud to represent our city as a community services commissioner. I am at a stage in my life where I think I have a different and complementary perspective to add to the commission, not just as a young mother, but as part of an intergenerational Temecula family. Now that my kids have started kindergarten, I want to use this time to give back to my city, which has given me and my family so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Tammy Meyer?
Good evening. Thank you for inviting me to speak to you about why I want to be on the Community Service Commission. My name is Tammy Meyer. I'm a 15-year resident of Temecula. I'm the mom of two. My oldest is a junior in high school, and my youngest is in middle school. I'm also a preschool teacher and a small business owner. I have a licensed family childcare program. That's a preschool in my home, and I've had that program since 2011. It's called the Child-Centered Home. My focus is on preschool and kindergarten preparedness, so I work with children who are between the age of two and five. My outdoor play space, which is my backyard, is a Nature Explorer certified outdoor classroom, so we spend a lot of time outside. My volunteer experience in Temecula is pretty varied, but I'll just highlight some things. I used to be a board member for Temecula Valley Players. I was in charge of social media and the website, and I did help produce some of the plays at Old Town Community Theater, including Cheaper by the Dozen, Legally Blonde, and Young Frankenstein. We also did have like a site for Reality Rally, so they would stop at our spot and do something theatrical as part of the competition, so I participated in that. I've also been a PTA volunteer, the secretary for the choir boosters at Temecula Middle School, and a team mom for Temecula Little League. I feel like I have a lot to offer to the Community Service Commission just because of my longevity in the city. And now that my kids are older, I feel really interested in learning more about the inner workings of the city, so I'd like to learn more by participating workings of the city, so I'd like to learn more by participating in a commission, how the city's run. Some ideas I have for the Community Service Commission in particular stem from some of my experiences. So before I had my preschool, I used to commute down to San Diego for work, and I would be in that long line of traffic coming home in the evening. It's really pretty when you're in Temecula and you see it coming. But when you work down there and you come home, and you get home at like 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock at night as a mom with young kids, you don't get to do those activities that happen at 10:00 on Wednesday. So I was always, I was very thankful that Susan Miyamoto offered a parent and me music, like toddler music class on Saturdays because I was able to actually participate in something with my kids. But when I would look through that booklet, and there were so many fun things to do, and I couldn't do any of them, that was kind of disappointing. So I would like to be a champion of working parents on the commission and figure out how we can work with some vendors to offer more classes for working parents, either on evenings or weekends. Also, as a preschool teacher, I have ideas on how to expand the preschool enrichment programs. The Bear Club and some of the other activities are really great, but because of my passion for learning through nature and how children really need to get outside, I'd like to see how we can do some kind of outdoor educational enrichment for preschool-aged children. So in closing, thank you for listening to me, and I hope that if you choose to put me on the commission, that I could be helpful. Thank you.
All right.
Next is Henry Miller.
Hello. I am very blessed to be here, and it's nice to see you, council members, bright and ready to go to work. I love that, Mr. Adams. I appreciate the invite to come talk with you. My name is Henry Miller, and I've been in town a little bit longer than most people. I've been in town 43 years, going on 44, and I have dedicated my life to service with Riverside County. I served with them as a volunteer. I've served with the city of Temecula as a volunteer, and I once was on the Community Services Commission and the Parks and Recreation Commission. So that was a long time ago. But in the meantime, I went to school because of I needed to learn how to serve my community better. By doing that, I can serve my family better. By doing that, I can really work with God's plan for this community. And I worked, I taught school at Oak Grove Institute for two years. I taught classes at Mount Zania Central College on our local history. And I also taught at the Paula Reservation for three and a half years. And then I went to school, got my degree in Business Administration, went further on, got my degree in Public Administration, and I went to Special District Governance School, where I was recognized for being a good student. And I also got honors at Mount or at Cal State San Bernardino. I graduated with honors. So I did this for my community. I did this for my family. And most importantly, I did it because that's where God led me. And so I come to you today to tell you a little bit about myself. I remember Stu when he first came to town and opened up a barber shop. And yeah, it was right around the corner or somewhere around here. But I remember that. I remember when a lot of you came to our city, and I got to greet you and welcome you, and I really appreciate those times. But I would like to serve, to continue the old traditions of sound morals, good quality of life, and sound judgment in the decisions that the leadership of this community has. I recognize the hard work that every one of you do for our community, and I thank you so very, very much. But by abiding by old traditions, we cannot but provide new opportunities for our citizens and our children, and that's what I want to see. That's what I want to be part of again. And I really have spent my years learning how to best serve. And I am at your service, and I am available. And I really, really want to do this again for my community. And I thank you very much. God bless you all for what you do, and God bless your families. Thank you so, so very much.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thanks so much.
You're welcome, sir.
Next is Carol Olivares. Carol? Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, city council members and Mr. Mayor. It is my pleasure to stand before you tonight, seeking reappointment to the Ready Commission. Over the past two years as a commissioner serving our beautiful city, I have witnessed and proudly participated in the amazing progress and achievements we have made as a community in the race, equity, diversity, and inclusion space. I have grown and developed through the opportunity to serve my community. I have specifically focused on the information, knowledge, and understanding that I have in two areas: education and special needs. Temecula has become known for accepting and including special needs families. It is an essential element to have continued representation of the special needs community within our city government. I believe I am the right person to do so. I am plugged in and continually learning new and relevant information from all of my other involvements, which I use to further our discussion within the city on special needs. For example, I am an executive board member for scouting in the Inland Empire. On a side note, that's a DEI accomplishment, as I am one of the first female board members in the Inland Empire in a traditionally male organization. I also serve as a council member for the Special Needs Chair within the local BSA. In this capacity, I work closely with the National Committee for BSA on scouting with special needs, gaining useful and meaningful strategies on diversity and inclusion regarding disability awareness that I can put within my toolbox. I also serve as a co-chair for the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education for TVUSD, allowing me to identify gaps between our community and our school district. I am also able to bring awareness to the city council and my fellow commissioners of the successes in the special needs community. For example, there is such a warm feeling when attending a Southwestern League Unified game, where many of Temecula's special needs high school students compete as athletes in track and field, basketball, soccer, and even bocce ball. The smiles, the laughter, the struggle, the tears, and the love that you feel are overwhelming as you watch the "I can'ts" turn into "I can, I did, and I will." And while that seems special, isn't it typical? I suspect, like me, each of you has had a moment where your "I can't" turned into "I can." Are we all that much different? While my focus is special needs, I understand and support all aspects of Ready. I am currently attending an HBCU for my degree in special education. Again, another moment where race, equity, diversity, and inclusion are harmonious in my life. While furthering my education, I also have an opportunity to gain unique perspective of diversity, which I can use to help further discussions here. All that I am involved in, whether it is work, school, a scouting member, a city commissioner, or a volunteer, race, equity, diversity, and inclusion are always present. I believe in Ready and its intended purpose as defined by our city council when it was established. I also believe that Ready, as a commission, needs to represent diversity to be an effective advisory board. I do not necessarily run in the same circles as my colleagues or as some of you, and while I used to think that that was a mark against me, I know now that it is one of my strengths and contributing factors to being an effective Ready Commissioner. I hope you find it to be the same. I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Crystal?
Next, we have Christian Peterson. Christian Peterson?
City staff and council members, thank you for taking the time. Allow me to introduce myself. I grew up in Temecula, and when I was a freshman in high school, I joined the Temecula Teen Council, determined to get my hours and leave. And you guys taught me something. You taught me service leadership, and I found myself volunteering at the Children's Museum or on the parades or doing a number of other things I never intended to do, but you taught me to, and you made me love this city. More importantly, I went to, at the behest of my AP Government teacher, the Participation in Government Day. And I don't know whether to thank them or blame them, but I had a long sit-down with Councilmember Washington and Councilmember Edwards, and they got me fascinated in this worldly municipal government. I went to work in government. I went and got an MPP from a program that focused on service leadership and local government, and that is what I've been doing for the better part of a decade. I figure if I spend 40 hours a week helping my consulting clients, most of whom are municipalities, be more responsive, more receptive, and more effective, I mean, I really should do the same thing in the city that I live in. Growing up in Temecula, I found it boring, and I took it for granted. And it wasn't until I had the opportunity to move around California and the country to learn just how amazing this city is and what folks like you have managed to turn this into. And when we look at California, it is no longer the California that was promised to people, and people are leaving, and the people who are staying, many of them are struggling to survive, yet we come to Temecula and people are thriving. And I think it's because of people like you, who have made it a priority to make it an inclusive and safe city, have made it a priority to keep our schools effective, make it easy to start a business, and you know, the dream of homeownership is still alive. So I just wanted to thank you for your service, and I am here to follow the example that you set for me. So thank you very much.
I do have a question.
Yeah. Mary Ann.
So I see you've applied for Community Services and Public Traffic Safety Commission. Of course, I'm partial because I grew up on public traffic safety, but do you have a preference?
Well, from my personal experience, I have the experience in terms of event planning and, as I said, being part of the Teen Council and part of our community, I feel that personally I'm more qualified for the community services. But professionally, as I said with what I do, I think I'm probably professionally more qualified for public and traffic safety. So I was going to leave it up to your wisdom. As I said, I'm here to serve, and if you think I'm best suited as a dog catcher, then I'll do it. Thank you very much.
We have really, really good dog catchers, animal control.
Well, then, you know, whatever.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it, everyone.
Thank you.
And next, we have JR Richardson.
Good evening, Mayor Ron, city council, and staff. It's good to be here. I have lived in Temecula 29 years with my wife, and it's hard to believe, going to be 30 years next year. And I have been honored and blessed to serve on the Public Traffic Safety Commission the past nine years. I can't believe it's been nine years. And I won't go through my qualifications. You have that. I'll talk a little bit about what's changed for me in the last year or so. Coming out of the pandemic, I continued to work at home about 95% of the time, and that has allowed me to become more involved in the community than I had been over my first eight years as a traffic commissioner. Everything from going to coffee with the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, to the big ribbon-cutting events, to the smaller art unveilings at Sam Hicks Park, to be out there with the community. And it's just really been an impactful change for me to see this community honoring its citizens in these small things and just doing that for this community. So to be able to be part of that has just been wonderful this past year. Also, working at home, I've been able to do things like get involved with the career technical education as an engineering advisor, thanks to my connection with Ron Marino and city staff got me connected there. And after 24 years of coaching track and field in Orange County, because I work there, I now am in my second-year coaching track here at Great Oak High School. So just being able to be more involved here in Temecula has just been a real blessing for me. I will say that, you know, you did approve the QLMP last meeting, and I was here, and I was personally glad to see equity added as a new core value for this city. I appreciate Stu and Mary Ann, you saying if the word equity has been a little hijacked and tarnished, it's up to us to take it back, dust it off, and define what it is by our actions in this community. And so when I think about traffic and what equity means in traffic, you immediately go to accessibility, to mobility, and as Erin pointed out last meeting, the Silver Shuttle Service is one way we're doing that. But I've spent a lot of time thinking about equity in traffic, and what I realized is that, you know, when a concern comes to staff and is brought to our commission about, say, Cut Through Traffic, whether it's Rustic Glen or Roropod Drive, one of our, you know, older, you know, more modest neighborhoods, that concern is given the same weight and consideration and importance in equity as if it's in the Estates of Medview or at the top of Red Hawk or Crown Hill. And so I see equity, and Patrick and his staff do a good job of doing that. The commission and public works are very thorough on all of these concerns from our citizens, no matter where they come from, and take our best solutions back to every neighborhood in this community. So I'm happy to see that we can connect equity with work even in the Public Traffic Safety Commission. So it's been an honor to serve, and I hope to serve you again, continuing, and I appreciate this opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Next, we have Deborah Skaggs. Deborah? Deborah Skaggs. Okay. Fernando Solis.
Honorable Mayor and members of the council and city staff, thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Fernando Solis. My wife and I have lived here for about four years. We were originally from LA, but when we decided to get married, we wanted to raise a family, and we thought Temecula would be an awesome place, and it has been. As we moved to the city of Temecula, we started discovering the city. We started walking a lot, riding our bicycles, attending city events, and enjoying all the restaurants in the downtown, and to this day, we still do the same thing almost every weekend. I actually really love my community, and in addition to that, I also attended a planning meeting with city staff about the new ADU implementation that they were doing. We plan to raise a family here. I don't plan to leave, and I decided that today I would like to serve my community, and the planning commission is something that I think my experience will allow me to do. I believe that the city of Temecula is a model city in the city, I mean, in the county of Riverside, and it is of Riverside, and it is also diverse, and it also is master-planned. As planning commissioner, I would use my experience and my background to continue the same high-quality planning practices that the city of Temecula has been using, along with staff. My background includes, my educational background includes an associate's in architecture. I also have a bachelor's from Cal Poly Pomona in urban and regional planning, and I have a master's from Cal State Northridge in public administration, because I used to work for the cities. I used to work for cities, and my goal was to be a city manager. Through my experience with the cities, I worked 12 years through municipalities during college and right after I graduated. I worked for the city of LA. I worked for the city of Almani, city of Rosemead, city of Beverly Hills, and the county of Riverside as a planner, as a city planner. During my time there, I wrote a lot of staff reports. I reviewed a bunch of projects that ranged from tract homes, custom hotels, city of Beverly Hills. I've reviewed a lot of commercial projects, and I presented a lot to the city council and the planning commission. During my time, I got to write, I got to review a lot, and I also did a lot of environmental studies. So I have a lot of general practice of what the planning commission has to review, what is important, and the detail. I also have a lot of experience in detail. During my time there in the cities, I think what sets me apart is that I reviewed the plans, I saw it get built, and then I actually inspected it during my time at the city. Also, with the city of Beverly Hills, I also reviewed all the architecture. So I reviewed all the commercial architecture, and I was the liaison for the architectural commission, which allowed me to see awesome projects, custom hotels, custom estates, the houses, 20,000-square-foot houses, 30,000-square-foot houses. You usually get lost in them. But I got to notice the detail of a high-quality design. During the last four years, I opened up my office. I have an architectural and engineering office. We do consulting also. We do consulting for commercial projects, residential projects. I usually present, I usually represent my clients for special projects, mostly if it's like a custom home on the hillside, if it's a special permit that requires a conditional use permit. Or I also work with a lot of architects, too, that they have me represent them when it comes down to the city, because I have so much experience with the city. I believe that having that experience with the city, having that experience of my own architectural office, and together, I feel that I would be a great asset to the planning commission, especially to serve my community. As I walk around, I notice different things that maybe my wife doesn't notice, like the trees, or the trashcans, or how this project gets built, or maybe the final aesthetic touches of the facades. But I feel that if appointed, my goal is to focus and implement policies that will promote safety, also high, healthier environment, high-quality design, and I would also use technology to make this community safer. My plan is to raise my family here, and I would love to have the city be the safest community, to have, to use technology with all these new projects to allow, to be a safe area. With that said, I would also...
If you can summarize here, your time is up.
Sure. Yeah. I would also like to serve the community as planning commissioner, because I feel my professional experience and my passion for the community would be a great asset. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any questions?
I have a comment. I tell Mr. Solis, we're the 16th safest city in the country.
Very true. Jessica.
Quick question for you. You had mentioned initially that you came to a meeting involving or talking about ADUs. What is your perception? What do you, what was your take on that for ADUs?
Professionally, I design about 40 ADUs a year, and we build maybe just like 10%. It's very difficult. ADUs are needed because the housing crisis that we have, when done properly, they are, it's a good, it's a good asset for a property owner and also for maybe a new professional or a new family that's just starting. A lot of the ADUs that I design are for maybe people that would like to retire, but they can't, and they would want to move into the ADU, and then their family and other sons live in the main house. There is a perception of ADUs being negative, because you're going to cram someone in a small little house, or, you know, you're going to have more renters, you're going to have more cars. But, you know, I feel, and I'm just speaking about Temecula and my house, I feel that the people that live in Temecula actually live in Temecula. They don't rent out their houses, as opposed to me doing a house in the city of LA, right, where no one owns their house. All the houses are rented. We put three ADUs on a property. No one could park outside. You know, that type of design, I think, is not appropriate for communities. The way they did it here was they looked at it and the aspect of aesthetics. When I was in the meeting, they're asking me, okay, well, where does the mechanical equipment go? Where does the, you know, how does the entrance look? And they had mostly everything. It was just a little, I just gave my opinion, because I designed them. I am going to build an ADU at my house, and I would love to put someone that maybe just got married, like us. When we just got married, we moved to Temecula, and we were living in a room, because rent was so high. So I would like to build, when I build my ADU, I would like to either rent it out to a family that one day wants to buy a house in Temecula, or maybe a young professional that really is never home, that just finds a safe place to live in. So the ADU, yeah. Thank you. And another thing, it is safe, and that's why we don't want to move. My wife and I, we would like to raise our family here. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Fernando. Next is Jackie Steed, to be followed by Brad Sullivan.
I forgot my glasses, so we'll see how this goes.
You can borrow mine? They're really strong.
Oh, not if they're really strong. They'll make me blinder. Okay. Good evening, mayor, city council members, and city staff. Thank you for your dedication to our community. It does not go unnoticed. My name is Jackie Steed, and I've had the pleasure of serving as a commissioner on the READY Commission since January 2021. The last couple of years have been interesting and enlightening, and I'm proud to have served on a commission with commissioners that have acted with integrity on behalf of the residents of Temecula to ensure that all of our community feels like they belong. Over the last two years, we have gotten to know all the departments of the city, how they are made up, and what their duties are. We have done a deep dive and asked questions of the department heads to ensure that they embody diversified needs of our community. Through the READY lens, we were shown time and time again that our city is one to be proud of. Our employees take their job commitments seriously and know that all of their activities on a day-to-day basis are to serve the greater good. I have been busy attending city and community functions as a READY commissioner, so I wanted to share some of those adventures with you. I have sat in on several DEI seminars with Habitat for Humanity and can see what an extensive job they are doing in serving our valley with our need for affordable housing. I have met with youth organizations, including Boys and Girls Club and Oak Grove, and discussed how the needs of our youth are being met. I have attended the Board of Realtors Housing and Diversity Committee and seen the good works they are doing in education, training, and policies in the DEI space within their organization. I've had the privilege of volunteering with city staff at the senior center to distribute food baskets. In 2021, I visited a couple of youth clubs at Temecula Valley High School. The first was ASL, American Sign Language. It was inspiring to speak with the group and learn what their goals were. They have a passion for special needs community and are continuing to come up with innovative ways to make a difference. I met with the Black Student Union and had an intense conversation with them in regards to what their city is doing to make sure that their voices are being heard. They were not aware of the READY Commission, but they were interested that adults in city positions were keeping them in mind as they set up policies and programs for our community. I have represented READY at the MSJC College Course Introduction to Nonprofits. That was such an invigorating conversation, and again, they were impressed that our city is involved in this work. I had the honor of being one of the judges for the third graders from Pachanga Indian Tribe and was educated on some of the history of the tribe's traditions. I have spoken with many leaders from our local nonprofit community in regards to the demographics that they serve and how they are working towards collecting the data to increase both their client base and the grants that they receive, both locally, nationally, and because of their dedication to diversity. Culture Fest and Juneteenth are both new events for our city this year. It was a joy watching our community come together and truly celebrate each other, our different traditions, and our cultures. I sat in this room as the city gave the Gay Pride Proclamation for the second year, showing that our city cares for all individuals, including our youth, their parents, their friends, and their families. I was here when our local youth accepted a proclamation for Asian Pacific Islander Month. One of the young ladies was in tears because her culture was being acknowledged. This, to me, is a true representation of the difference a city can make. I've also worked with the business community and have had some enlightening conversations in regard to what READY means to our local businesses. The major stakeholders in our community continue to seek education and be part of this conversation so they can meet the needs of their individual businesses and employees. This is especially prevalent in the special needs community, where job opportunities continue to be a struggle. I recently visited the Interfaith Council as they had presented the city of Temecula with the humanitarian award based on your work in the READY space. They are a true example of how people of different faiths can come together to support, encourage, and educate each other by working together. They were a remarkable group of people and truly represent what Temecula Valley is about. Our veterans and local law enforcement are a huge part of our community. I love that our city continues to acknowledge their service and celebrate them through Memorial and Veteran Day events and health and safety events. Temecula is what it is, and a huge part because of their dedication. I love Temecula. Anybody that knows me knows this. I loved being a part of this commission and working with the commissioners that have a passion for the greater good. If I'm reappointed, I look forward to continuing the work. Thank you for your time.
All right. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Next, we have Brad Sullivan, followed by Gary Watts.
Good evening, council members and staff. Brad Sullivan, I'm here because I love this city. I love being of service to the city. Being of service has been a creed of mine, and as you saw in my CV, in addition to my work here, I was the previous Public Safety Commissioner in the city of West Hollywood, where I received a lot of accolades and recognition for my work in disaster preparedness. And in fact, as a result of that work, I was the first civilian permitted to enter, and I graduated top in the class, of the FEMA Academy on Disaster Preparedness and Disaster Mitigation. I've held every Red Cross training and teaching certificate there is and provided free lessons to the public, again, for safety issues. I'm here seeking a third term on the Public Traffic Safety Commission. In my first six years on the commission, I have served as vice chair one year and as chair for three years. And pre-COVID, if there was a city event, I've run into all of you there, because I was always there. Getting back into the swing of things as COVID's over, but I attended all the sheriff's department functions, DUI functions, and all of their serving of warrants for DUI arrests, and have been very active in participating. In addition to serving on public traffic safety, I just was re-elected recently to my 13th consecutive term as president of Wolf Creek. For those of you not familiar, Wolf Creek is a HOA in South Temecula with 1,806 homes in it. Like your jobs, it's not one where people really appreciate you much, but a lot of good things get done. And that HOA has won both the Board Member of the Year, which I received, and then also the Best HOA Board in the inland empire. So we've done some good work there. Prior to that, I've spent almost 30 years in serving my profession. I'm a retired chiropractor, and I've served in their board of directors. And back in 1993, I was honored to be elected the youngest president of the largest state association in the country. So service is what I live to do. I believe in giving back to my community. I love this community, and I hope to do more. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right.
Mr. Watts?
It was good to sit up here and do it. This is better, right?
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Gary Watts. You may know me, you may not. I am on the planning commission, currently the chair of the planning commission, and I'd like to just give you a brief, a little bit about my past, a little bit about our present, and a little bit of what I hope to see in the next few years. I'm going to age myself. The first time I came through Temecula was 40 years ago. In 1982, I had just received a transfer to Anza Borrego Desert State Park as a state park ranger. I was kind of green out of college and had worked a couple of years. But when you got off the freeway on 79 South, there was a fruit stand, stop and get a coffee or a Coke or a snack, and it was nothing but dark all the way to Borrego Springs in those days. Little did I know, 11 years later, I would get a promotion and be transferred to San Diego as the chief ranger for all the San Diego Coast District. Well, some things never change. It was very expensive to live in San Diego, still is. And my friends had told me Temecula was a great place to live. So I decided that my wife and my two kids did not need to live in San Diego in a neighborhood with bars on the windows, and we chose Temecula, and I decided I'd commute. And that was the best decision I'd made, because we loved Temecula. We always did. I want to thank Mr. Kingsburg. Both of my daughters were taught by you on constitutional issues in American history. So thank you very much. You did a great job. I even remember you because you were so good. Anyhow, so we love Temecula. I worked in San Diego for four years, and then I got promoted to the regional manager position at Lake Paris, which was in charge of all the state parks in Riverside County, as well as some in San Bernardino County, as well as some in Orange County. So I was spread pretty thin at that time. And when I started as a ranger, we did all the cool things. When I went to Borrego, I got to ride a horse, got to ride a motorcycle, got my own Jeep, and I had a house that lived in the park. So I walked out my front door and went to work, and it was fantastic. Never in my 40 years with parks did I ever not like going to work. It was just the best job ever. But as I promoted and got older, I became a superintendent and had a whole bunch of different responsibilities that you're thinking, what the hell is he talking about? But these are all things that I think play into planning commission now. Just to give you an idea, I had management responsibility for over 30 police officers. In that role, I sat on two fatal shooting review board that reviewed shootings that were involving state park people. We worked closely, of course, with Riverside County, CHP, and other law enforcement agencies as well. But that's not all I did. We had a water treatment plant at Lake Paris. That's probably caused me more grief and more wide awake nights than any other, because if something went wrong with the water system, there was none coming back, if people got sick, or even worse. So eventually, every year, we had to put out a consumer confidence report on our water and tell people that use it, which are mainly park people and visitors that came, what the quality was. And we get that every year from our water company now. Stu probably knows all about that stuff. Endangered species. We had a species at Mount Santa Sino State Park that grows nowhere else in the world, Hidden Valley Blue Curl, nowhere else. So kind of big deal to make sure that we protect those things when you're given that responsibility. Prescribed fire. I signed prescribed fire plans for Lake Paris and Chino Hills. SEQA, big part of planning, right? State Parks is a trustee agency, so we had to comment on all development issues near any of our state parks. So I got to know planning departments through city and county, three counties, very, very well, and we responded quite frequently to concerns as it related to housing developments coming next to the park. So I learned all about mitigation, and I learned all about wildlife, urban interface, and we have that here now. We had that issue with the Altair Development. And we had Wildlife Corridor. Coal Canyon, which is on the Hennanyan Freeway, was closed down by Caltrans to allow... we're having that same issue here with Palomar Mountain and the Santa Ana. So a lot of experience there. 20,000 acres of MS HCP lands we were responsible for. I sat on a joint powers group, the Wildlife Corridor Conservation Agency in Orange County, and a lot of political people, a lot elected for Brea, Chino Hills, Diamond Bar, all those people. So got to work real close with those, and our state attorney was quite concerned when I told him, this group has decided to sue a developer. And being a member of state agency, how in the world would I have that kind of responsibility?
Your time is up.
All right. Anyhow.
Sorry.
I've been on the commission. I've been the chair. I am the chair for, this will be a year and a half. We have a great commission, get along well. We really care. We've done a great job. I can't say enough about Luke and the planning department. They bring us stuff that's complete all the time. And if you feel it in your hearts to reappoint me, I will accept and serve again. Sorry I took so long. I have a lot more to say, but thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you so much.
Next is Roger Williams.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and city managers and supervisors. Let me introduce myself. I'm Roger Williams, and I'm applying for an open position on the Ready Commission. You have my resume. It looks really technical. I got it. I haven't applied outside of DoD or the military for anything in over 40 years. So let me just break that down and tell you some things that's not, that's on the resume but may not be clear. So I've done 20-plus years of active duty in the military, part enlisted, and then selected as a warrant officer for communications systems. I've been the operations officer for the largest unit in the United States Marine Corps and worked as the Systems Planning and Engineering Officer. Basically, what I did is it is an international billet where we coordinate with other countries, other agencies for contingency planning and operations of communications and network systems. So I have a lot of experience with working with personnel from other ethnic groups, other nationalities, other religions, you name it. And one of the biggest things that I learned there through this whole experience is that it's always better to seek the negotiation than the compromise, the win-win over the win-lose. That's one of the big, that's one of the big things that I think I could bring to the Ready Commission is the sense that you can't beat anyone over the head to get them to buy into Ready. You can't. You have to show them a win-win. How is it valuable to you to incorporate this group, this activity, into yours, bringing them along? One of the big things that we saw during the COVID experience was the digital divide, right? Where is the high-speed fiber for all the networks to bring everyone in? I don't know about your communities, but I live two blocks from Bear Ranch Middle School. Wow. For people who try to work from home with all those kids trying to pull in on that network, I think that that network needs, needs more. It needs to be more consideration for all the communities as far as the high-speed networking. Just moving on, another thing that I bring is, I was also, I was also selected twice to the National Presidential Classroom as an instructor. Basically, what the Presidential Classroom is, it is a civics program that's taught to, or it used to be held in DC. You had international and national students from all over the country that come together in DC to learn about civics, whether it be... One thing we guaranteed, that every student would meet one of their representatives. So I had to do, when we had students from California, I had to meet with senators, congressmen, staff members, to make sure that the students were going to be ready, have a time slot to meet with them. I've also, I've also met with many federal heads of agencies. I met with the FEMA, the FEMA head, and one of the things that I learned there was that we have the CERT facility right here in Red Hawk. So my FEMA, my CERT, my CERT certification actually came from FEMA. I'm a Level 1 certified. But one of the big things that's also, I don't think a lot of people know, is that CERT, it is a Community Emergency Response Team. Does every community know that you should be participating in that? Part of inclusion is getting to, getting the word out to people that this is available to you, to volunteer, to be a part of, right? I think we miss a lot of that by not getting that out, which is one of the tenants of the Ready Commission, which is to serve as an ambassador to educate the community about opportunities related to diversity, inclusion within city events and programs. So, and then just to finish up, I am a Six Sigma Black Belt and a CCMRI, CMMRI Level 1, and basically, that is process improvement, taking away waste, and saving resources. Anyone have any questions about who I am, what I do, and how I can help you? I'm here for it.
All right. Any questions? All right.
I wouldn't know where to start.
No worries.
I'm here for you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have Jeffrey Whitick, and then finally, Paul Reitzman. So Jeffrey Whitick? Jeff Whitick? Okay. Paul Reitzman.
Paul, aren't you glad your last name starts with a W?
Well, let me tell you. First of all, thank you, and I'm sure on the behalf of my fellow applicants, for moving us up on the agenda. And as a W, ever since I was in third grade, I wondered why the teacher didn't think out of the box and go, okay, everybody line up Z to A, but it never happened. I'm Paul Reitzman. I'm pretty much a lifelong resident, I'm sorry, council commissioners and staff. I'm pretty much a lifelong resident of LA County, but the walls were closing in and even some of the best neighborhoods there. And when our daughter got accepted at UCSD, we started looking around, and we finally discovered paradise, Temecula, California. And we've been here going on two years, and we will be here to stay. The reason I want to be on the Ready Commission is that I know how important it is to recognize the challenges that many of our fellow Americans have in their day-to-day lives. I don't see Ready as a response or answer to BLM or Antifa protests. Those are political and anti-established movements that do not represent ordinary people that are marginalized or people of color. I see Ready as a genuine communication and advisory body that cares about everyone equally but whose mission is to make the extra effort to make sure that all people are and feel included. I know a lot of emphasis, emphasis for some people is that the law does treat everybody equally. We've got equal rights, commissions, we've got equal opportunity, fair housing and all that. And those are facts, but there is a larger truth, and that is that the majority of people, for example, who are not of color, do not have any idea what it is to go out into the world every day and be greeted by the world and its social systems just a little differently or a lot differently. And we've made a lot of enormous progress in America on that front, of course, but there's still more work to do. And not with another bunch of laws, but some genuine hometown, community-level outreach and open communications, respectful communications. So having been in LA County my entire working life, I have a lot of experience living and working with the entire spectrum of humanity, LA County. I went to Fairfax High School next to a little enclave. I came up earlier today, West Hollywood, if you've heard of that city. So I've seen, experienced, and communicated with just about all kinds of marginalized people. I'm not going to list them. Bottom line is, most of the marginalized people in our society are good Americans. They just want to be treated fairly. And I applaud Temecula for the reach-out. I've talked to some locals, and they're suspicious that Ready is just an effort to window dressing to appease loud street radicals, and I don't see it. It's not appeasement. It's a genuine effort by our local government to stay connected to everyone. And being a W, I kept my comments short. You're not going to stay here much longer. That's why I think I'm ready to be on Ready, and open any questions.
All right. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes the in-person presentation. So at this point, we'll turn it back over to you to facilitate a discussion, and what we'll do as staff is we'll go ahead and take notes, and then we'll ask for one final motion at the end.
Can we take a quick two-minute break?
Sure.
All right. Let's go ahead and do that, and we'll come back in two minutes. All right. So that was exactly two minutes again. That's amazing. All right. So let's see. I think we should probably start with the Community Services Commission, and hear your thoughts on that, and would like to start sharing. Stu.
First off, I want to thank you all who came and expressed your desire to be on these commissions. And, you know, the thing that kind of struck me and probably is the exact reason why we're all here, is we love Temecula, and we want Temecula to be the best place that you could possibly live. And so that's, I found that very refreshing, you know, in this world of I hate everything and everybody loves Temecula, so good job. As far as commissioners?
Yeah, just, we're going to start with the Community Service Commission.
And so...
So we have two vacancies for Community Service.
Two.
So, Mr. Mayor, just really quickly, what we'll do is, what we did last year is, if you can just facilitate a preference from each of your colleagues, we'll go ahead and keep tally. At the end of that particular tally, we'll let you know who has the most, and then if there are folks that are very close, you can facilitate an additional discussion. We'll start with Community Services.
So I have, as my top, is Jeff Kingsburg and Ernest Castillo. Those are my two.
Okay. Planning Commission.
Oh, we're going to go through, are we just going to do Community?
Actually, if we can do Community Services first, that would be fantastic.
Okay. All right. Who wants to go next, then? Mary Ann.
Yeah, I've known Mr. Kingsburg forever, and so I have him and Ashley Maddox.
For two that I would pick, it was, I had three here, Stephanie Hernandez-Dawson and David Lombardo. Am I saying that right?
No.
Yes. Lombardo.
Yeah. Dawson and Lombardo. Got it.
Wait, wait.
As in Guy Lombardo.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Sorry. Make sure.
Okay. Zach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we get into, I mean, I at least want to say thank you to everyone that applied. This is a wonderful situation we find ourselves in, where you have a pretty thick book of applicants, highly qualified to serve our city and willing to serve, right? It's can be a troubling time in local government where no one wants to serve, but clearly we have folks that are willing to do this, so thank you. I say this every year that we do this, if you don't get selected, please stay engaged. There's many, many, many opportunities to stay engaged. Vacancies happen all the time, and so we need to fill those with folks that are engaged. Okay, that out of the way for Community Services. I also had Jeff Kingsburg and Tammy Meyer.
Okay. All right. And again, to all the folks, both here and not, this process is always fun. It's a little lengthy. I apologize for that, but it's a good opportunity for us to get to know you all. And it's also nice to see the applicant pool. You know, when I first got on the council, the applicant pool for some of these boards and commissions, it became sort of perfunctory, that everybody always assumed the incumbents would get it and this kind of thing, and we'd only get an application or two that came in. And so over the years, we sort of evolved into a different process here, and I think this demonstrates, you know, a lot more open, a lot more transparent way of doing business. So very happy to see, and very happy to see that just the quality of all the applicants who came forward and are willing to serve this community and obviously show all the same love and trust in this community that we all have. So it's remarkable to see. All right. So for me, I have Kingsburg and Castro for Community Service.
Okay. So...
Kingsburg, Castro.
with two. And then I have Stephanie Hernandez with one, Lombardo with one, Maddox with one, and Meyer with one. So Kingsburg and Castro are the two highest vote getters.
All right. How do we all feel about that? We good? Okay. Okay. Perfect. All right. Thank you so much, and let's move on to Planning Commission. Who would like to start that one off, Jessica?
All right. Hold on for one second. Okay. All right. I have down here, I want to make sure I have the right one, Gary Watts and Rob, I'm going to Bobby Bender or Robert down here, so.
All right. Who's next? Zach?
So I also had Gary Watts. I think Gary, you've been doing a fantastic job on Planning Commission. And I also had Fernando Solis.
All right. Mary Ann?
I had Mr. Gary Watts, and thank you very much, and Fernando Solis.
All right. Stu?
I'm going to be an echo here, and Gary Watts and Fernando Solis.
All right. And I am also Fernando Solis and Gary Watts.
Okay. The top two vote getters are five with Gary Watts and four with Fernando Solis.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Public Traffic Safety Commission. Zach, how do you feel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Public Traffic Safety Commission, I like JR. JR, I think you've been doing fantastic jobs, so I'd certainly like to see you there again. The, part of the problem with this, too, is on paper, you go through these applicants and you kind of get in your head where you're going to land, but I really like folks to come and present. So there are some folks that didn't present. That being said, Bradley, I think you're doing a fantastic job, and I'd certainly love to see you serve again. But maybe in the future, some folks that apply, I really like, I think this is a valuable part of this. So for me, it's JR and Brad.
Okay. Stu?
I had JR and Brad also.
All right. Mary Ann?
Same for me, and I swear we haven't talked about this until this moment.
All right. And Jessica?
Echo.
All right. Well, yeah, and I'll say that this, this one was, was a tough one because we had some remarkable folks. I mean, all the commissions did, but certainly, you know, it looks like Brad and JR, you're back on board for a little bit longer, anyway. Okay. And then, Mary Ann, why don't you kick off Ready Commission?
Okay. Now, this was an easy one because Ready Commission is so new, and they, you know, they, they're just getting their feet under them. So I went ahead with Jackie Steed, Crystal. So I went ahead with Jackie Steed, Crystal, and Carol Oliveras. Crystal Pastorian.
All right. Jessica?
So, actually, can we hold on just for one second? So Jackie Steed, Crystal Pastorian. And then, I'm sorry, you said Carol?
Oh, I'm sorry. No. Oliveras.
Yeah. So that, I just wanted to make sure because that person wasn't here to present today.
Let me check. I'll come back to you.
Okay.
All right. Well, how about we go to Jessica?
Give me two minutes.
Jessica's going to need two minutes. Who else wants to go? Zach?
I'll go ahead and go, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, thank you very much. So, I agree that Jackie, you've done, where's Jackie? There's Jackie. You've done a wonderful job on the Ready Commission. Looking forward to seeing you serve and that again. Crystal, I agree. Again, you've done a wonderful job and look forward to seeing you serve. There were two applicants for this next position. Stacia Deutsch and Catherine Laff. I both thought you both were both standout applicants. Unfortunately, I have to pick one. So I'm going to pick Stacia. I think Stacia, I think you're a good fit. Catherine, I think you're a very solid fit as well, but Stacia.
Okay. Stu?
Well, of course, I got to go with Jackie Steed and Crystal Pastoria for the same reasons. They're, you know, they're still relatively new and doing an amazing job, so I hate to upset the apple cart. But I had Stephanie Dawson as my third. Hernandez Dawson.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Jessica or Mary Ann?
I've got my third one, and it was Stacia.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So for me, this was hard. Mr. Paul Wright, I absolutely loved hearing from you and your ideas because I, you're in my district and you had great ideas. I'd like to be able to see you come back to try out for the Ready Commission for sure. I'd like to continue to see Crystal and Jackie, continue to do what they're doing right now. I see you guys at a lot of events and jumping in. You're doing a lot of great things with special needs. I applaud you and thank you both for all you're doing. The other one I'd like to pick out is Stephanie Hernandez as well.
Well, obviously, Crystal and Jackie, you know, way to hang in there because I know the last couple of years haven't been particularly simple. But you've shown a tremendous work ethic and dedication to the cause and just the continued, you know, personal growth in this area as well, recognizing the role you're playing for the city. It's very important and appreciate the commitment. So of course, you have my vote of confidence. I'm going to be the tiebreaker here, and I will cast my vote for Stacia. Are we good?
So, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure, so with that one, Jackie Steed, Crystal Pastorian, and Stacia Deutsch were the top vote getters.
All right.
Okay. So at this point, unless there is additional conversation or discussion with the council, we will go ahead and ask for a motion to appoint Kingsburg and Castro to the Community Services Commission, Watts and Solis to the Planning Commission, Richardson and Sullivan to the Public Traffic Safety Commission, and Steed, Pastorian, and Deutsch to the Ready Commission.
I'll move that item.
Second.
All right. If you could all please cast your votes. And that passes five to zero. Again, thank everybody for joining us this evening for that. Thank you all for having applied to the Commission. Extremely important. And continue if you didn't get appointed. There's only a limited number of seats and lots of really good applicants, but we definitely would stay engaged in the city and hopefully can be working with you again in the future. All right.
And do apply again.
Please do. Yep. I think Mike in the Guard likes to talk about he applied for Commission.
I think it's up to 15 times now.
It's up to like 10 times now.
Hundred times. Started out at four.
But he did it. So, yeah, absolutely. Appreciate that, everyone. All right. Moving on to, gosh, where are we? Board Commission Reports. Let's go ahead and start with Community Service Commission, Kathy Sizemore.
Good evening, Mayor Ron and City Council members. Our last meeting of the Community Services Commission, if we could have the next slide. Next slide. Well, we are a commission of five people. We have Commissioner Hawks, we have Vice Chair Adi, we have Commissioner Eric Levine and Commissioner Chris Kristofsky. And we review and make recommendations on topics related to the parks and rec element of the general plan. And on the next, our last meeting was November 14th. I was not in attendance, so I do want to thank our Vice Chair Gary Adi for taking over in my absence and leading our meeting. So not only was I absent, but we also had another commissioner who was absent, so we were not able to approve our action minutes for our October 10th meeting. So we are postponing that for our December 12th meeting. And other than that, we've received excellent reports from our Community Services Department on all that is happening in Temecula and all the fun, exciting events that we'll be having here in December. And that is it for Community Services. Thank you.
All right. Thanks so much. Mr. Watts, Planning Commission, welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, and members of the public. You will see the members of your Planning Commission up there, and I would just like to take a moment to point out that Commissioner Telesio did not reapply. And he served 18 years, I believe, as a planning commissioner. So he's seen a lot of changes, and I just wanted to personally thank John for not only being a great commissioner, but being a good mentor for me as long as other people. But these are your five planning commissioners. Planning Commission serves as the designated statutory planning agency for the city of Temecula, reviews and makes recommendations on topics related to subdivisions, specific plans, zone changes, plot plans, and conducts legally required public hearings. Our last meeting was on November 16th. Could I have the next slide, please? We reviewed proposed amendments to Title V and 17 of the municipal code. In the interest of time, I won't read all of those. There were no, we approved it with a four-to-vote, four-to-zero vote, and there were no public speakers. Next item, please. Planning Commission reviews the proposed Second Amendment to the Winchester Hills Development Agreement. The amendment would reinstate the original term of the development agreement for property located within portions of Planning Area 12 of the Harbiston specific plan. There was one public speaker for this item. He was neutral on the item but stated concerns related to construction taking place in the project area. And the commission voted for to recommend that the City Council approve the proposed amendments. That's it. Any questions? Thank you.
All right. And Denise Wilson, Ready Commission. Good evening.
I'm going to make all of you talk tonight. Just do this. There it is. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, our guests, and our staff. I just wanted to introduce you to our Ready Commission, and we have a fabulous group. We actually love each other. I'm joking. We do love each other, but we're, I have this partner in crime over here. Okay, it's my turn to shine. Stop making things. Okay. So, it's late. I'm sorry. I'm normally in bed at this time. So, I just want to introduce you to our committee, which is Adam Eventhal, Eric Faulkner, Lyman Ledgers, Crystal Pastorian, Jackie Steed, and myself, Denise Wilson. The Ready Commission is made up of seven residents who serve together as an advisory group to the City Council. We make recommendations on topics of diversity and inclusion with the city events, services, programs, and policies, and enhance community relations. We met on November the 10th, and we actually had two really, really good presentations. The first one was by Carly Bennett, who was the Executive Director for the Boys and Girls Club. And she shared the services that the club offers and provides, such as academic support, sports, arts, STEM program, career readiness, and leadership programs. But one of the good things that we really liked is that they have implemented a DEI policy. Yes. And that policy is for training their staff. And not only that, but they have incorporated that into all of their services and their programs. So of course, we were very excited about that. And then we got an update on the reopening of the Temecula site for the Boys and Girls Club. And then we had Ms. Jacqueline Scott, who was the Senior Account Manager for ESRI. And ESRI is our Environmental Systems Research Institute. And she gave a presentation on the geographic information system. And this basically is a system that we use to gather data, and it helps our community because it can target areas in our community that need special services or programs that are not effective in the area. So we got a really, we had a lot of good discussion with that. And then we also had the Director, Mr. Damon Patrick, from the IT Department. And he also shared with us about the GIS and the Ezra data that's currently available on the website for the city of Temecula. And then I just wanted to thank Jackie Steed because she was able to attend the Peace Garden Dedication Ceremony, and they actually came to Ready and gave a presentation. And this was regarding the pole, the Peace Pole Project. And this was put on by the Temecula Valley Rose Society. So I just wanted to applaud that. The Ready Commission was definitely out there in support, and we thank you for that. And that completes my report.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. And joining us here tonight, Riverside County Sheriff's Department, Chris. Good evening. How are you doing, sir? Thank you for joining the beautiful city of Temecula. How's the public safety doing?
I've got the green light. I'm excited to be here.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, can I officially welcome our new Police Chief, Chris Durham, to the dais? This is his first meeting. We're happy to have him, yes. Welcome, sir. I'll let you give, we know Captain Hall is still awake and watching us from his living room, so we hope you're feeling better. We thank Captain Hall, of course, for his amazing service over the last three years, and we're excited to work with you, you chief. So, welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm excited to be here. Temecula's a great place. So Mayor, City Council, City Staff, allow me to provide the public safety report, calls for service. This is as of November 28th of this year, year-to-date. Deputies here in Temecula have responded to 71,183 calls for service in comparison to last year. It was 76,845. So in the month of November alone, we've responded to 5,778 calls for service this month. And to give you a historical perspective, last year in the month was 6,626. And that concludes my report. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Any questions? All right. Well, I just wanted to welcome you as well. Sixteenth safest city in the country, so, you know, we've at least gotten a good foundation for you. We'd like to be 15th or 14th next year.
Let's do it.
But, no, I really appreciate you coming on board, your long line of remarkable folks from Sheriff's Department, Southwest stations, remarkable station, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Let's see. Public comments, non-agenda items. What do we have this evening?
Mr. Mayor, we do have a few public comments. The rules are provided on the agenda. And the first speaker is Gillian Larson. Mrs. Larson, thank you for waiting.
You're hanging tough. Welcome, Gillian.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, City Staff, and Temecula. I know it's very late, so I'm going to be very brief, which is unusual for me. And this meeting wasn't as long as the elephant. Now, it isn't the elephant in the room. It was the elephant in the parade. If anybody remembers, I think that one went on till two in the morning. And that was because I wanted an elephant as part of Reality Rally. So, that being said, what I'm here this evening to tell you is that we are going to take a break from Reality Rally next year. My husband has retired. He's sitting back there with his head hanging in shame or excitement because we are going to go on a four-month trip to Africa. And I, we just cannot do both. So I am taking a break. We are taking a break in order to celebrate what would have been our 50th anniversary in 2020. And so, because COVID had other ideas for us, so we stayed home. But this next year, it'll be 53rd anniversary, and the poor man's put up with me all these years, so he deserves a good trip. So we will be doing future planning for Reality Rally. But mainly, I wanted to thank you all for being such a huge part of Reality Rally. It definitely has been huge support. It couldn't have happened without all of you supporting us in this wonderful city of Temecula, which we clearly all love, as we've heard all evening. And we will come back in 2024 with a few revisions and see what we can do to make it even bigger and better. Because as you know, the goals for Temecula, I mean, for Reality Rally, first of all, is to raise funds for Michelle's Place Cancer Resource Center, which every person has been touched in some manner. Also, to promote Temecula and to bring the cities together, which I have loved. I have seen all seven area cities come together and have fun at Reality Rally, and we look forward to seeing that again. So thank you very much for your support. And I know I wasn't very brief, but I wanted to be sure that I did tell you, we will be taking a break. And thank you for your previous support all these years. It's been 12 years that you guys have been on with us, and that's a long time to run an event in collaboration with us. So thank you very much. Anybody have any questions? No. We're going to Kenya and Tanzania for a migration safari. And then, I'm from South Africa, in case you didn't catch the accent. And I did speak with a wonderful gentleman who gave your prayer at the beginning, and he's also from South Africa. He's from Zuland. And I picked up the accent, and I spoke to him for quite a while. He's Zulu. And that is part of where we're going. I'm going to be seeing family, friends in South Africa in a variety of different places.
I have a question. So if 50th anniversary is gold, what in the world is 53rd? Do you start going back downhill, you know, like?
Oh, don't talk about going downhill. My body feels that way.
Poster board or, you know, cotton or, I don't know.
I don't know. It would have to be something pretty impressive, I would think.
Moon rock, perhaps?
Moon rock. Yeah. So thank you. I'll have to think on that, and I'll let you know. And thank you guys so much. Any other questions?
Just send us, make sure you send us a postcard.
I'm actually going to have a vlog site, so you can watch and see. I don't want to have to repeat myself 10 times, so I will be, well, 2,000 times. I will be sharing that vlog, blog, story, photo site with everybody. Because I've got really techie since I've been running Reality Rally, so I'll let everybody know, and they can follow on. And thank you all, and thank you, Aaron and the city. And I have to say, I'm sorry Kimberly isn't here, but I did tell her. She has done amazing work with Temecula and has been hugely supportive of us as well. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Gillian.
I won't leave till the end because I should be here with all of you. Thank you.
Wonderful. All right.
Thank you, Larsons. Enjoy your well-deserved trip. The next speaker is, I'm not sure about the first name, but the last name is Sutherland? Lucia Sutherland? Nikki Lamondo? Nikki Lamondo? Bryant Rumbaugh. And Bryant, you are our last speaker, so welcome.
Thank you. That was a long evening. That was very interesting, more or less, seeing all the people come in here and having the opportunity to give their spiel on why they should be hired by the city. You know, it was about six weeks ago that I initially came in here. It was prior to the, obviously, the election, and it was, you know, the big no on Prop One was going on and all that type of things. And, you know, as I was listening to everybody speak tonight, it was really informative for me just to see all the opinions and, you know, we can call it diversity, we can call it, you know, differences. And differences are not a bad thing at all. I can, I would definitely say that me as an individual, I choose to notice the similarities, the congruencies that we all have with each other. Among them, obviously, is that we're Americans. And, you know, what I'd like to say is certainly if we got to the point where we, you know, where we, you know, raise good human beings and we allowed humanity to learn from itself, I would think that we would really recognize that we are more the same than different. But as opposed to pointing out all our differences. In other words, when we recycle these differences, it's definitely going to never go away. But when I was here two weeks ago, you know, I did actually have a rough evening. And, you know, what had gone on was, was I had, a friend of mine, like I said, had gotten arrested. And I was wanting to talk to you guys about a solution that I want to see America take, because I am worried about our country. What I would love to see is us to take the money out of politics. And how we could do that is really quite simply by taking advantage of the tools that we have available to us. When I say that, when it comes to campaigns nowadays, you know, you've got, obviously, still the campaign signs, which is the way that we've all grown up. We've got digital advertising, which is the way that it's going on. If us as a citizenry provided a platform where campaigns were ran from and we raised the society to understand that their civic duty would be to essentially be engaged. When I was at the Board of Supervisors this morning, you know, I did kind of, I kind of mouthed off a little bit, or, people may, I'm a good man, okay? They may have taken it incorrectly. But in Riverside County, we had 45.86% of eligible voters that actually quote-unquote "turned out to vote." And, you know, I did kind of say that as a politician, people need to, in my opinion, stand up and say, hey, this is not acceptable. These are, these are not, we don't want government to solve all of our problems. And my time's running slow, low. What I want to say is also, I noticed this earlier. It is kind of nice that even though I'm, you know, six foot one, that we're at eye level. It's a little bit different at those Boards of Supervisors. Because the citizens, you know, you guys are us. We are the government and we're together, we're equal.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that was our last public speaker.
All right, thank you so much. City Council reports, do we have anybody?
I do.
Stu.
All right, so this Friday is the Electric Light Parade. So anybody who has not ever done this, it is truly a hallmark moment for the citizens of Temecula. And so, and, you know, as Community Service President, I'm really super proud of our Community Service Department and Commission. And just the events that they create, create real community. And if you take advantage of it, you have such a different perspective of Temecula. Just by engaging in these activities, starting even with the Veterans Day concert that we do out in front of City Hall. Totally small-town America, I mean, it's just such the coolest thing. And then our Christmas tree lighting that we just did yesterday. And, you know, and, you know, we probably had 500, 600 people show up for that. It was really just such a cool event. And this is another one that is just really fantastic. And then the grape drop that's going to happen New Year's Eve. It's like, all these events are such, like I said, they're hallmark moments. I'm into hallmark movies all of a sudden. My mother, my mother's here from out of town, and I've watched 30 of them, I think, since she's been here. So, but anyways, that's, I wanted to highlight this next one because this is, this is always such a very, very cool parade. So if you're in town and you want to see it, 7:00, get there early.
Kids and dogs.
Kids and dogs, yeah.
All right, anyone else? Oh, Jessica.
All right, we can do the first one with National Preparedness Month. Nope, the other one. Awesome, all right. So I had the opportunity to go with my youngest son. He was the only one who wanted to get up early enough in the morning to go with me. He's up there in the left-hand corner. We had a blast, I have to tell you. If you have not yet gone with your family, especially your children, I highly recommend it. We had gotten to see so many different organizations be able to come together to prepare us for different type of emergency situations. Anything from, you know, local disasters, we were able to have, talk with different service workers. Lots of activities for the children, if you can show the next video, just as an example. I thought this was incredible. So they were actually teaching the kids how to put out the fires and use a fire extinguisher. And how incredible to have the opportunity to sit with a fireman, to be able to get instruction on that, and to also create the community together for building. And I think he even got the other guy wet that was sitting there, so, which was pretty neat. Anyways, so that was that, so I just highly recommend it. I also do have to tell Community Services. Yeah, it was pretty cool. Community Services, I have to say, I absolutely love the fact how you guys did the drawing. So there was a card that if you reached every vendor, you got to put into a drawing. And I have to tell you, my little son had so much fun doing that he went to every place, which is about 20 different vendors, and he wanted to be in that drawing so badly. So I think it was really good, it was an encouragement to get to every vendor, to just see what they have for this, for the, you know, as far as information, so.
Did he win?
Thank you. No. That kid went home and was so crying.
He cried, he did not win.
He didn't cry, it was, it was just wonderful, it was wonderful.
It just shows you that it's not fixed or rigged.
No, it was wonderful, I appreciate that, it was a really great way to do it. If we can have the next one. And today I was actually able to, at the end of the month, be able to reach out to the International Christian Adoptions Agency here in Temecula. I got invited about a month and a half ago to their open house to kind of get an idea of how they work internationally with families and really locally here as well with families, to be able to get children adopted from all different backgrounds. And the fact that they're international is incredible for me. You walk in there, you see places, you see different fair trade stuff from Africa and all over the country. So they're really doing a fantastic job working with kids and being able to get these children into loving homes and giving parents who might not have the ability to have children to be able to bring a family together. And it's just, it's an absolute, it was a blessing and an opportunity to work with them. So I'm just thankful for them, and that was for the National Adoption Month, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to Consent Calendar. Item number one, waive reading of standard ordinances resolutions. Item number two, approve action minutes of November 15, 2022. Number three, approve list of demands. Number four, approve financial statements for fourth quarter ending June 30, 2022. Number five, approve agreement for minor maintenance services with Lawn Scape Systems, Inc. for weed abatement maintenance services for fiscal year '23 through '27. Number six, award construction contract to, hmm. What? Pronounce that, come on, Pat.
McKellen.
McKellen, okay. Systems Land, just go with that. And Maintenance, Inc. for recycled water accelerated retrofit program, project number PW21-04. Item number seven, approve license agreement for use of real property right-of-entry and access agreement for city-owned land located at Assessor Parcel Number 910-262-061 between Gray Star LP and City of Temecula. Item number eight, approve third amendment to agreement with Mark Thomas and Company, Inc. for I-15 congestion relief project PW19-02. Item number nine, approve second amendment to disposition development agreement with Altria LLC for disposition of property located on corner of Rancho California Road and Diaz Road, APN 951-021-081, and portion of Diaz Road.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, please cast your votes. And that passes 5-0, I'm going to recess to Community Services.
And I will open the Community Service District Meeting. Madam Secretary, please note we're all still here. There are two items on the Consent Calendar. Item number 10, approve action minutes of November 15, 2022. And number 11, approve financial statements for the fourth quarter ending June 30, 2022.
Move approval.
Actually, Mr. President, we, for the record, there are no public comments. And then also, there is a third item on the back of the agenda there.
Got it.
If we could just read that title and we'll ask for the motion.
All right. Number 12, adoption, adopt resolution regarding annexation of Track Map Number 37341-1 through 37341-10 within summer's bend to Service Level B residential streetlights, rates and charges located at the east side of Butterfield Stage Road and long, north of Long Valley Wash.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second, please vote. That passes 5-0. All right, so our Director reports.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
All right. So any Board of Directors' reports, none seen? I will adjourn until, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot.
Nothing further than that, Mr. President.
That's what I assumed, okay. I'll adjourn until next time.
All right, let's go ahead and open up the Successor Agency to Temecula Redevelopment Agency meeting. Do we have any, oh, let the record show, we are all still present. Do we have any public comments? No public comments on the Consent Calendar this evening. Item number 13, approve financial statements for fourth quarter ended June 30, 2022.
Move approval.
Second. All right, motion in second, please cast your votes. That passes 5-0. Do we have an Executive Director report this evening?
Nothing in any, Mr. Chair.
Any Directors? None. All right, we're going to go ahead and recess that meeting and go ahead and reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. And first item is a public hearing. Item number 14 is to approve amendment to Old Town Specific Plan to revise certain development standards and land use standards. Get a staff report, please.
Thank you. Planning application LR21-0279 is an amendment to the Old Town Specific Plan to revise certain development standards and land use standards. The genesis really for the amendments that you're going to see tonight comes from the fact that we've been working with the current specific plan since 2010. And since that time, we've worked on all scale of projects. And we've been able to look and see what things do we want to change. We've also been able to talk to applicants and just get some ideas on really how to make the document better. And we believe that the amendment you're going to see tonight accomplish that. We all know the specific plan boundaries, but I did include a graphic just so you can see the boundaries of the Old Town Specific Plan. And what I quickly like to do is just briefly go, briefly mention the different amendments, and then I'll go into them in greater detail. The first thing we're going to do is revise the maximum building height for three and four-story buildings in downtown core. We'd also like to add a raised outdoor patio for commercial structures, revise ground floor facade standards, and revise parking setbacks, particularly with regard to parking structures. We're also going to provide revised language, excuse me, for architectural guidelines to clarify the need for varied roof lines and different fencing requirements. We're also going to put in single-family homes in the residential limited mixed use. We're going to exempt them from the non-conforming use language. We're also going to revise alley requirements for how utilities are situated in alleys. And we're going to make several amendments to the use matrix in the specific plan with regard to beer tasting, escape rooms, entertainment, which goes with the entertainment license that was approved earlier in the year. And we're also going to add in the various restaurant types that we now recognize. And then finally, we're going to put in some revised language for bed and breakfast establishments to make it more consistent with the current municipal code. That being said, the First Amendment deals with the building height for three and four-story buildings in the downtown core. Currently, the maximum height is 50 feet, and we'd like to increase it to 55 feet. The reason for that is because we're hearing from applicants that the California Mechanical Code and the Energy Code is making it very difficult for them to put in the different types of equipment they need between the floors. So an extra five feet gives them greater flexibility when they're designing their projects. Next, the raised commercial front porch frontage type. We'd like to add a frontage type that will allow for a raised front patio, approximately two feet or so. And we find this is really conducive for outdoor dining. The two-foot height puts the person that's eating on the patio kind of at eye level with the folks that are walking down the sidewalk. So no one's looking over at your plate or looking kind of at your midsection, it's kind of more eye level. We have this situation in Old Town right now, I have a picture here. This is the swing-in, you can see my little red line with the arrows. That's about two feet right there, so that would be the approximate height that we'd be looking at. With regard to commercial ground floor facades, right now, the specific plan prohibits aluminum shopfront and spandrel glass-type material on the bulkhead. And the bulkhead of the building is the area just below the windows on the ground floor, essentially all the way down to the ground. What we'd like to do is revise the language to say that those materials are not allowed anywhere on the ground floor. We want to be able to produce designs that you can see here on the right instead of what's on the left. We want to stay away from that kind of strip mall kind of material look. With regard to parking setbacks, currently, the specific plan, particularly when you're looking at a parking structure, it says that parking needs to be placed at least 20 feet behind the build-two line, and it's preferred to have 50 feet behind the build-two line. And the reason for that, as you can see here in the red boxed area, within that setback, we want to have pedestrian-friendly uses. We want to have restaurants, coffee shops, retail, things like that. And the cars are actually physically parked behind that area. But the specific plan goes on to say that that setback, whatever it's going to be, goes all the way up to the top. That's not really necessary once you get off the ground floor. In this example here, actually, the architect, for the example you see here, is the same architect that did this building that we're in. This particular building has the parking brought all the way up to what would be the build-two line. So this provides a nice compromise to where the applicants can get a little more parking, but we still maintain that pedestrian-focused ground floor that we want to have with those pedestrian-oriented uses. Very roof lines, this one's pretty self-explanatory. Basically, building facades that exceed 50 linear feet, we want to have varied roof lines in those designs. And that's consistent with the design guidelines that we already have in place, which is, again, creating consistency between all of our governing documents. With regard to fencing, the specific plan right now includes requirements for fencing that is associated with outdoor dining. So you can kind of cordon off alcohol service or anything like that. But there's nothing in there for situations that have nothing to do with outdoor dining. And we've had a few folks come to us, want to put up fencing, and we're kind of, not flat-footed, but it's just not as easy to get through that. So we're going to add language in there that's consistent with the, that is consistent with the dining fencing, so that way those folks have some opportunities. And we're going to make sure we have the same materials, we're going to use the same height requirements. And we're also going to put a section in that says chain-link fencing is not allowed in the specific plan area. With regard to non-conforming uses, there's language in the specific plan discussing non-conforming uses. That type of language is really more geared towards commercial uses. It has nothing to do with single-family homes. And in the specific plan right now, the neighborhood residential section is exempt from the non-conforming uses section. But we didn't put in there the single-family homes that are in the residential limited mixed use. It just seemed like it was missed, we're putting it in. With regard to utility locations, the specific plan requires, if an alley is present, to put all utilities in the alley. We'd like to take it one step further and have it to where utilities are not only in the alley, but they're undergrounded, unless the utility company says it's not feasible. We're going to make several revisions to the use matrix. We're going to remove the nightclub designation because that's now going to fall under entertainment, which is that whole entertainment license that was approved earlier in the year. We're also going to add beer tasting and escape rooms, those will require CUPs. We're also going to have the entertainment, which is what I just mentioned, that'll be the entertainment license. We're also going to add the five restaurant types that we identified when we were working through the entertainment license. This will make it really easy for folks who want to open up a restaurant to basically pick a category that they're going to be in and make it very clear what their requirements are. And this section will refer back to the municipal code so they can see what their entertainment license requirements are, if that's the direction they want to go in. And then finally, for bed and breakfasts, the specific plan right now says that they have, applicants who want to do a bed and breakfast have to follow the municipal code requirements, with the exception of the primary residence does not need to be the principal use of the site, and it also does not follow the minimum site size requirements to have a bed and breakfast. We're going to take that language out and say that bed and breakfasts in Old Town need to follow the municipal code exactly, so then it's consistent. The amendments you see before you, they were presented to the Planning Commission Old Town Subcommittee, as well as City Council Old Town Steering Committee, and they were received favorably by those two bodies. We also took basically the same presentation you just heard tonight. We took it to Planning Commission back in October. And the Planning Commission recommended that the City Council approve these amendments. From a sequel perspective, staff created an addendum per Section 15164. And based on the information staff just presented, staff recommends the City Council approve the amendments. This concludes my presentation, I'm available for any questions, if you have any, thank you.
All right, questions, Mary Ann?
So we're talking about utilities in alleyways. And we know that the ultimate goal everywhere is to underground everything. And Old Town is really impacted by overhead utilities from the old, olden days. So how, how, under what circumstances would we be able to move those utilities behind the buildings? Because if buildings aren't changing and there's no improvement within a certain block, then there's no nexus to having to move the power lines.
Sure, this, this would be for either major mods that are going to impact the utilities or for new developments. development plans, when there's an alley available. And we would require them to put the alley... excuse me, put the utilities undergrounded in the alley unless we have some communication or correspondence from the utility saying it's not feasible. That's the goal here.
Yeah. We need to put our thinking caps on and figure out how to get those Old Town Front Street utilities moved back underground. Okay. Just curious. Thanks.
Actually, I was hitting on the same thoughts, Mary Ann, and could sound ignorant on this fees for that. Like, who and how does that get paid for? As far as, like, let's say, I'm just buying a new business here in Old Town. Do I, as the store owner, am I going to have to pay for that to be moved back? Or what does that look like?
No. This would not be for somebody opening up a store. This would be for somebody who's building a building or doing some type of modification to the building or the site that impacts the utilities.
Okay.
If you're coming in to open up a store, not making any changes, it's not going to be tricky.
It does not impact on that. Okay. All right.
I guess you have to pay as part of your development.
That's what I was wondering. Yeah. Okay.
Not just if going to a store, but if you're building a new one or...
Okay. That's what I thought. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? All right. Well, it's a public hearing, so let's go ahead and open that. And do we have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, we have none.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and close that. Any other comments from council? All right. Will? We are looking for a motion.
I move approval.
Second?
Please cast your votes. And that passes 5-0. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Item number 15 now is to approve Third Amendment to the Disposition and Development Agreement for Vine Creek Apartments Affordable Housing Development between City of Temecula as housing successor to the former Temecula Redevelopment Agency and Temecula Pacific Associates. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Before you today, I'm going to be presenting on the Third Amendment to the Disposition and Development Agreement for Vine Creek. And so, before the council tonight is a resolution to approve the Third Amendment to the Disposition and Development Agreement, also known as the DDA, with Temecula Pacific Associates and the Vine Creek 60-unit affordable apartment project. I know you've heard of this project before, and so tonight, I'll just be providing some basic background information and some details on the Third Amendment changes. The project location is located on Pujo Street, right in between Main Street Apartments and Villa del Sol Apartments. The previously approved project is a 60-unit development located in Old Town Temecula, where there's 18 units set aside for extremely low-income family households, 12 very low-income units, and then 29 low-income units. And so, 12... Also, a good note is 12 units are set aside for families and individuals with special needs. Just some background here. In 2019, the city entered into a disposition and development agreement with Temecula Pacific Associates, which is the developer. And the DDA provided a $2.7 million in affordable... provided $2.7 million affordable housing funds through financial support and land donations from the city. Through the First Amendment to the DDA, the city helped the developer secure additional funds in the sum of $2.8 million through PLHA grant funds from the Riverside County. And on February 22nd, Second Amendment was approved for an extra $4 million to be added to the permanent loan, which would make the project more competitive for tax credits. The increase was approved, and the tax credits were awarded to the project. As for the Third Amendment, it is typical for agencies using PLHA funds to participate in the residual receipt payments, and that's just a fancy word for cash flow in the project, if there's any. And so, the county of Riverside initially requested a 50-50 split with the City of Temecula in receiving residual receipt payments. The City of Temecula negotiated a split based on the amount of funds each agency was providing towards the project, and so, we agreed on a 70-30 split. The city staff took this agreed-upon amount before the Support of Housing Subcommittee for their approval on October 24th. And with this Third Amendment to the DDA, the City of Temecula would receive 70% and Riverside County would receive 30% of all residual receipt payments for Vine Creek. So, it is staff recommendation that City Council approve the Third Amendment to the Disposition and Development Agreement between the City of Temecula and Temecula Pacific Associates. Any questions?
Questions?
I do.
Mary Ann?
When it goes to the Affordable Housing Committee, is that a binding decision? In other words, whatever they say, that's... it's just kind of like mediation. Whatever they say the split will be, that's what it is?
Luca will go ahead and answer this.
Yeah. No, it's strictly a negotiated number. So, the county came to us and said, "We want to participate in residual receipts. We're putting $2 million into the project." We want... They said they wanted 50-50. We said, "Well, we're putting $6 million in. You're putting $2 million in. So, let's do 70-30." They agreed to that. So, it's a negotiation.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay. It's a public hearing. Let's go ahead and open that. Boom. Any public comments?
We have none.
Okay. Close it. Any other comments from council?
Move approval.
Second?
Let's go ahead and vote. And I'm going to say that passes 5-0. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we already dispensed with item number 16. So, moving on to item number 17, receive presentation on city's fiscal strategy update at the request of myself and Ms. Edwards. And I think we're going to kick that over to Mr. Adams.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This is the item that the audience has been waiting for. They're on their feet. And they're leaving. All right. This item before you this evening is placed at the request of the Strategic Fiscal Ad-hoc Subcommittee, as you mentioned, of Mayor Ron, Councilmember Edwards. In my tenure as your city manager over the past 10 years, I have presented a lot of items to the Temecula City Council, many of which come with a varied levels of passion, enthusiasm, and opportunity. This item tonight brings me a great deal of excitement and pride in sharing this opportunity and brief history. It was in May of this year at our budget workshop where I first expressed my desire to the City Council that we would be pursuing an aggressive fiscal strategy and modeling that would elevate our already-good fiscal position to one of even greater standing. I reiterated this desire again in June as we presented our balanced budget, and we walked through our balanced five-year projections and very aggressive capital improvement program, valued at over $790 million. Talk became reality when we began meeting frequently with the City Council Subcommittee, rolled up our sleeves, and began discussing, sharing, and modeling various scenarios while attempting to convince the bank of our desire to early payoff our only two mortgages. We also spent a considerable amount of time tracking our CalPERS fluctuations and rates following the ups and downs of Wall Street and market conditions affecting our investments and our respective irrevocable pension trusts. That being said, we have a plan, and we have a strong recommendation that will place the City of Temecula in a uniquely and enviable position throughout the state and the nation. But before we get into that, I believe it's important to take a few minutes to completely understand how we arrived here today financially. To do so, we need to go back in time 10 years and examine many of the prudent, fiscally-conservative steps taken that have become a hallmark of this city. Jennifer will cover a decade of intentional steps taken by our city and City Council that's placing us here today. Facility debt is not unique to cities, counties, and special districts, but it is truly rare for an agency to have no facility debt or be poised for an early payoff of their said obligations. Our city made a business decision nearly 16 years ago to build a civic center, not just a city hall, but a civic center complex that would include a public parking garage to support the downtown, street improvements around a public town square, and then finally administrative offices that would serve as a city hall for the next 100 years. We also discussed that any public investment in the civic center complex in the Old Town area was going to generate tens of millions of dollars in private investment and private jobs. I believe we underestimated this private investment, looking back over the last 15 years, in what locating the center of government operations meant to a now-thriving Old Town. Private investment and jobs in the Old Town arena today is well now in the hundreds of millions, if not billion, with the pending private development of Alter west of Old Town. It cannot be denied that placing the civic center complex in Old Town was an economic development catalyst. This story is also told by the consultants from Kaiser Marston, or KMA, in studies commissioned on file with the city, as well as being told out there in the lobby on the video that's playing. As the financing was being put together for all these various public facility components, it was known that it would be an expensive endeavor and likely would need to be phased over time. The city at that time was fortunate to be in a position to put down a considerable amount of cash in the form of undesignedated fund balance, utilize RDA funds for the public parking garage. Street improvement and CIP-related project costs were also incurred, and we were able to capitalize on favorable construction bids and only borrow a relatively small amount of $24.5 million in the form of a certificate of participation note. While borrowing to build a beautiful permanent center of government in Temecula became a possibility, saving over $10 million on construction bids now presented the city an option to build the complex as more or less one project versus years of phasing in. It was discussed and often referenced in passing, if and when we could, it would be nice to be in a position to pay off the note early despite having low-interest financing and, of course, save on the interest and principal payments. Since 2008, we have taken advantage of refinancing this debt on two occasions to achieve better interest rates without adding additional years to our term. Tonight, you will hear how we intend to pay the remaining $12 million of the civic center debt obligations. Tonight, you will also hear how we intend to pay off the remaining $6 million of a brand-new intergenerational community center currently under construction at Nigar Community Park, meaning, when we cut the ribbon on this new public center and swimming pool in a few short months, we will owe nothing. As a 33-year-old city, these are the only two facility debt obligations, and we are excited and fortunate to be in a position to completely eliminate before this Christmas, freeing up several million dollars annually for reinvestments and saving on interest by paying off 10 and 12 years respectively early. This can be accomplished without touching our designated reserves and, of course, without sacrificing future capital projects planned or affecting city operations. Tonight, you will also hear how we can take our investments in our two irrevocable pension trusts, coupled with available resources, on how we can also aggressively pursue complete funded status of pension obligations in seven years versus 25 years. Let me remind you that we, as a city, are 80% funded, which is great, yet the goal is to be 100% funded on your outstanding obligations. By taking this action of becoming debt-free of facility obligations, the city will be truly setting the financial table in the near term to begin accumulating additional discretionary dollars in the millions and millions for projects identified in the recently-approved Quality of Life Master Plan 2040 and funding those additional citizen priorities. And lastly, you will hear how we have managed our treasury earnings, taking advantage of better and higher interest rates as part of our overall investment portfolio. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Finance Director, Jennifer Hennessy.
All right. Thank you. This is going to be riveting. Just stay awake. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. In tonight's presentation, we will first preview a 10-year history of fiscal strategies that have successfully positioned the city to consider the second item, which is a strategy designed to fully pay down the city's debt and liabilities over the next seven years. Assistant Director of Finance, Ward Comers, will then present an update on the city's investment program, and finally, will provide staff recommendations and answer any questions you might have. To start, we thought it would be a good idea to set the foundation for tonight's discussion and display various metrics illustrating how the city has grown financially since 2012. The general fund budget, including the addition of Measure S, has grown by nearly 125% in the past 10 years. General fund reserves... general fund reserve levels have doubled. Our capital investment has increased over 80% to nearly $800 million. Asset management fund balances have quadrupled in the last 10 years, all while staffing levels have increased by a conservative 25%. The city has a longstanding history of solid fiscal responsibility in managing resources in a prudent, fiscally-conservative manner. Over the past decades, several measures have been implemented to strengthen the city's fiscal position, including the establishment of new budget policies, executing cost-sharing agreements, leveraging outside grant funding for a capital improvement program, establishing new asset replacement funds in an irrevocable trust... and an irrevocable trust fund to mitigate future pension costs, as well as ensuring employer retention and attraction with competitive salaries and benefits. The council approved several new and modified key fiscal policies over the past 10 years, including the Reserve for Economic Uncertainty. This policy was modified to define the eligible uses for the funds, as well as establish a secondary reserve at 5% of operating expenditures in the event of a sudden decline in revenue or a large unanticipated expenditure. Target reserve levels are now 25% of expenditures. The council also approved a policy to outline the uses for unassigned fund balance, one of which is the reduction of unfunded liabilities and city debt. Additionally, policies for the use of Measure S revenue were established in 2017 after voters approved the measure, and council also established a contingency planning policy, expand... oops, expanded the number of asset management funds, approved the pension rate stabilization policy, and most recently, adopted a new investment policy. Through these various fiscal policies and prudent management, the general fund has remained balanced with reserves exceeding... I'm sorry. Revenues exceeding expenditures over the past 10 years, and is projected to remain balanced for the ensuing five-year forecast, as shown in the first chart. And as a result of the balanced budgets, the general fund reserves have exceeded the policy requirement of 25% of expenditures, shown in the second chart, creating the available fund balance that will be discussed later in this presentation as a means to pay down the city's debt obligations. The city has partnered with other local agencies to share in the cost of providing public safety services, including a 50-50 cost share with the Temecula Valley Unified School District to fund five school resource officers. This agreement saves the city approximately $440,000 per year. The latest fire services contract with the county includes a gradual 50-50 cost share arrangement for the staffing at Fire Station 95 in the Warper Ranch area, which will save an estimated $800,000 per year. The city has an agreement with the Flood Control District that allows the city to conduct encampment cleanups on flood-controlled property and provides reimbursement of up to $75,000 per year. The city has had tremendous success in leveraging local funding to obtain nearly $1 billion in outside funding for the capital improvement program over the past 10 years. On average, the CIP is 70% funded by grants and other outside contributions. The city has also negotiated a number of energy-related acquisitions to reduce ongoing operating costs, including the purchase of the streetlights from SoCal Edison and the subsequent retrofit of two LED light bulbs, which generate $750,000 a year in budgetary savings. Additionally, a solar power purchase agreement has been negotiated and will become effective in the coming months, and that is anticipated to generate approximately $40,000 a year in energy savings. Staff has worked diligently with the city's outside financing team to identify opportunities to refinance outstanding obligations to reduce annual debt service payments and, in the case of community facility district bonds, save homeowners on their property tax bills. Since 2014, the city's been able to take advantage of the CalPERS prepayment plan for the annual employer contribution, saving roughly $93,000 per year by paying the entire annual obligation in July of each year. As noted in the policy section, the council has approved the addition of several new asset management funds over the past decade. the addition of several new asset management funds over the past decade and the funding for the eventual replacement of the city's fleet, facilities, technology and roads has grown from a balance of 2.8 million to 15.3 million since 2012. Most recently, due to the rising costs of asphalt and concrete, the pavement management capital project had a budgetary shortfall of $3 million and we were able to utilize the accumulated balance in the street maintenance asset management fund to fill this budgetary gap. One of the most successful measures put into place in the past decade was the creation of the pension trust in 2018. With seed funding of $8 million plus annual contributions, the balance in this trust grew to nearly $20 million prior to the recent market contraction. While the balance has dropped to 17 million, the trust is still a substantial funding source for the proposed pension liability paydown that will be discussed shortly. As a service organization, the most important resource of the city is its workforce. And as the city has negotiated successor labor agreements, compensation surveys were conducted to evaluate Temecula's ranking amongst the cities in our region. Council has utilized this information to establish desired compensation levels to ensure employer retention and attraction while keeping within the city's available financial resources. The current labor agreement includes a cost of living formula to ensure that compensation keeps pace with inflation so long as there is adequate city revenue to support the wage adjustment. And as depicted on the chart, despite the expansive financial growth experienced over the past decade, staffing levels have increased by 25% in a very controlled and measured manner, ensuring adequate resources are available over the long term to make new quality, quality of life initiatives come to fruition. This chart summarizes the budgetary impacts of the past decade's strategic fiscal measures, which have produced over $2.2 million annually in operating savings, generated nearly $1 billion in capital investment, saved Temecula homeowners an average of $260 per year in property taxes, and established a pension trust available to pay down the unfunded liability that will in turn generate significant future annual savings to fund the needs of the community. As Aaron mentioned in his introduction, staff has been working collaboratively with the Fiscal Services Ad Hoc Committee to develop a comprehensive debt and liability paydown strategy whereby the city's debt will be paid off over the next seven years, all without the use of general fund reserves. The city currently has four outstanding debt obligations. We'll walk through each one in detail, but this slide provides a summary of each obligation. The total outstanding debt is 69.5 million and it currently costs 7.2 million per year to service this debt. Without accelerating the payoff schedules, the debt would be paid off over a 25-year period. As Aaron mentioned previously, in 2008, the city issued 24.5 million in certificates of participation notes to help fund the construction of the Civic Center. This debt was refinanced in 2011 and again in 2018 to lower the interest rate down to 3.42%. Currently, the outstanding balance is 12.7 million and has 10 more years until it fully matures. Also in 2018, the city entered into a second loan for the construction of the Margarita Rec Center and the outstanding balance on this loan is 5.1 million and has 12 more years until it would be paid off in full. With the current interest rate environment, staff was able to negotiate an early payoff of these two low-interest loans for a fee of 1% of the outstanding balance. Utilizing available fund balance from the general fund, the city could pay off the two loans on December 15th, save 3.2 million in total interest cost and 2.1 million in annual debt service over the next 10 to 12 years. The future payments totaling 21.6 million could be redirected to pay down the pension liability. Another outstanding liability relates to the cost of providing retiree health benefits offered to eligible employees, known as other post-employment benefits or OPEB. The city provides funding for these future benefits by contributing annually to the OPEB trust established in 2008. Currently, the balance in the trust is 16.6 million, which covers the majority of the $20.6 million liability. Currently, the unfunded liability is $4 million and is expected to increase to over $5 million due to investment losses incurred over the past year that have not yet been reflected in our trust balance. The OPEB liability covers the cost of the retiree health benefit, the annual fees of the CalPERS health plan, and a calculated implied subsidy as required by accounting regulations. The estimated payoff of 5.1 million would generate annual budgetary savings of $645,000 per year. The city's pension program is funded through CalPERS or the California Public Employee Retirement System. Each year, CalPERS develops a complex actuarial valuation to determine the city's annual contribution to fund its current and former employee pensions. The valuations include several economic assumptions related to investment earnings, inflation and mortality rates. Any deviation from these economic assumptions creates either a gain or a loss as compared to the projection. Gains are spread over 30-year time horizon and losses are spread over 25 years. The cumulative gains and losses plus interest create the unfunded liability amount. While the city's pension is 80% funded, the current unfunded liability of 40, is 46.4 million and costs between 4 to 5 million annually to reach full payoff in 25 years. There's three primary factors that create an agency's pension liability, including the level of benefits provided, the age of the agency, and whether or not the agency has public safety employees. To provide some context regarding the city's pension liabilities, this slide shows our neighboring cities' unfunded liabilities and their funded status ratios. You can see that the older cities and those with their own police and fire departments tend to have higher liabilities and a lower funded status. Statewide, approximately 4,100 agencies contract with CalPERS for their pension program and roughly half are below the 80% funded level. As shown on the chart, very few agencies reach the desired status of being fully funded. The proposed strategy utilizes available resources to pay off debt, which creates additional annual savings that would be combined with the available, available resources until all debt is paid off. Using current budget and economic projections, the proposed strategy would pay down all debts and liabilities in seven years, creating ongoing budgetary savings up to $8.5 million per year beginning in year eight. This proposed strategy does not include the use of any general fund reserves nor any funding dedicated to CIP projects over the life of the plan and will include trigger points to reassess the plan in the event of an economic downturn. The prudent fiscal management over the past decade has generated significant budgetary savings which have accumulated in the general fund. These available resources, combined with the balance in the pension trust established in 2018, provides a source of funding to pay down the city's debt obligations. As the debt and unfunded liabilities are paid off, the annual debt service is reduced, creating ongoing annual budgetary savings which can be used to further accelerate the paydown of outstanding liabilities. The most significant benefit of this strategy is that once the debt has been paid off, the budgetary savings can be reallocated to meet the needs of the community. This table shown, shown here illustrates the annual cash flow by fiscal year assumed in the paydown strategy. Both facility loans would be paid off in December of 2022, as well as two of the 29 pension amortization bases to create an annual savings of 1.6 million this first year. Next year, the OPEB liability and another two pension amortization bases would be paid off, generating over $3 million in annual savings and so on and so forth. And the cash flow assumes that $5 million of the pension trust would be utilized in each year plus available fund balance from the general fund. And by spreading out the drawdown of the trust funds over the next several years, the hope is that we would recoup some of that lost interest as the economy improves and rates of return increase. By paying off the pension unfunded liability in seven years versus 25, the city will save over $30 million in total interest, which would be similar to paying off your mortgage early. In order to develop the paydown strategy, we updated and expanded our financial projection over a 15-year time horizon. As with all forecasts, several assumptions are built into the projections to reflect anticipated market and economic trends. The 15-year forecast includes conservative revenue growth assumptions and all known contractual increases are reflected in the projection. As the economy changes, it will be important to revisit the plan and update the assumptions. Several outside factors will influence the availability of funding needed in the paydown strategy, including investment returns, revenue and expenditure trends, and a potential economic recession. Staff will provide a budget policy for council consideration to include trigger points on when to reevaluate the plan and update the assumptions. The chart on this slide illustrates the annual budgetary savings that would be achieved through the paydown strategy. The savings generates additional fund balance that is redirected towards the outstanding liabilities until all are paid off in seven years. The budgetary savings peak in year eight at 8.4 million and then tapers off as the existing Civic Center and MRC loans mature in years 10 and 12 respectively. And the savings generated by paying off the OPEB and the pension liabilities would be ongoing. This slide illustrates the impact of fund balance and reserves as the paydown strategy is implemented. The columns in the chart show the available fund balance, shown in green, and the 25% reserve shown in blue. The green line in the chart reflects the impact of the, on available fund balance after implementing the paydown strategy. The first six years of the plan utilize the majority of the available fund balance to pay off the outstanding debt. And then beyond year seven, after all debts are paid off, the available fund balance begins to escalate at a much faster rate because of the elimination of the annual debt service. By year 15, an additional $26 million in available fund balance would be generated, all while the 25% reserve stay fully funded throughout the implementation of the paydown strategy. The additional fund balance creates a funding source for one-time projects outlined in the updated Quality of Life Master Plan or for other municipal needs. I'll now turn the presentation over to Assistant Finance Director Ward Comers, who will provide another riveting presentation on the investment program.
You're putting the pressure on me now, aren't you?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, thank you. Mayor and Councilmember Ward Comer, Assistant Finance Director. Just going to take a couple of minutes to talk about the, some of the updates we've made to our investment program. And so why is that important? Well, there's about 150 million reasons why an investment program is important. We have implemented a new program and there's four steps to that process. Go to the next slide. The first is adopting a new investment policy. The investment policy sets the priorities for the investments that we can make. The first priority is safety of principal. That means we don't lose any money. The second priority is liquidity. That means we have cash available to pay our bills. And the third priority is return on investment. So if we can meet the first and second priority, then we can try and earn some interest. The investment policy also determines allowable investments. So basically, we're restricted to investment-grade securities. We're not allowed to invest in stocks or crypto, FTX, Bitcoin, things like that. The investment policy also incorporates best practices. And the city council adopted the latest version of the investment program on June 14th, 2022. The second step in the investment program update was to perform a cash flow analysis. So first, we determine cash flow trends and seasonality. Like most cities, we collect the majority of our revenue in January and May with property tax. And so what that means is we have a net outflow of cash between June and December of each year. We go down to about 10 million, we draw down on cash. The cash flow analysis also helped us determine or consider any major outflows of cash. So things like CIP projects or making a large payment on a Civic Center, we try and anticipate those events. Doing this analysis helps us estimate our liquidity needs. We need to have about 10% more than our largest drawdown. So if our largest drawdown is about 10 million, we want to keep 11 million in cash at all times. And then using all these factors, we're able to consider the size of liquidity portfolio and a long-term portfolio. The next thing we did is develop a portfolio strategy. So we optimized our portfolio into a liquidity portfolio and a long-term portfolio. Current portfolio is about 153 million. It was 88% liquidity and 12% long-term. So by having 88% in liquidity, we probably have what's called excess liquidity. Excess liquidity is not bad. It's good to have cash available, but we're giving up some investment gains. So we set the target for the portfolios to be 50% liquidity and 50% long-term to try and maximize some of our interest. Also, as part of the development, developing the portfolio strategy, we consider risk and return objectives. We're anticipating a recession coming up, so we want to make sure that we have cash available to deal with that. We also established the two-year treasury as our portfolio benchmark. So we are using that to gauge all of our investments against. We also determined appropriate sector allocation. So we invest in US treasuries, corporate bonds, things of that nature. And then we, we determined the maturities to distribute along the yield curve to try and maximize value again. And then we start managing the program. So we executed the investment plan. We look for undervalued assets to purchase. And so far, we've rebalanced the portfolio to 65% liquidity and 35% long-term. And there we go. So this chart displays the investment yield comparison. The gold line is the benchmark. The orange line is the liquidity fund or what's known as the state pool, LEAF. The benchmark is at like about 4.34%. The state pool is at 1.95%. The blue line is the investments we've been making since we've updated the investment policy back in July. And so currently, we're tracking the benchmark very nicely and the portfolio is achieving 4.17% yield. So what does all this mean? So new investments to date, we've made 30.6 million. Our average yield is 4.17%. This is 2.14 times higher than LEAF earnings. So for example, 36 million invested in the new pool or investments returns about $106,000 per month. If that same amount of money was invested in LEAF or still kept in LEAF, it would earn 50,000 a month. So that's an additional $56,000 per month in interest that the, the city is earning by implementing this new program. And finally, at full implementation, we expect that this will yield an additional $93,000 a month in interest to the city. And that concludes my riveting portion of the presentation. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if you're, if you're still with us, we'd like to turn it back to you and, and Councilmember Edwards as part of the working subcommittee on this project, so.
I am 100% here and I would first open it to Ms. Edwards.
When we discussed this this morning, it was evident that throughout the year, staff has done numerous things to place the city in a position that we will be able to do this. And you know, when I talk about things like this, I just make it familiar. So just imagine you can pay down your house early and reap the benefits of not having to make those house payments every month. And you take that money and put that toward pension or, you know, in, in, in personal cases, health insurance or long-term care or something like that. So every step along the way, staff has found ways to save money. They've found sources. They've found sources for grants. 70% of our capital improvement projects, rec center and things like that, are paid through grants. And those grants, you know, they come with accountability, but they are not paid back. So we are a very thrifty city, but we found ways to do the very best for residents every single time and still save money to the point that even when we built the civic center, we had $10 million in reserves. So we banked that and leveraged other funds with it. It's an amazing statement to be able to say that 70% of our, that we're within 70% of being flush or of being debt-free. So, and I did notice, Jen, MENAfee, MENAfee's numbers are different, in case anybody was looking. So you want to give us a little explanation about why MENAfee has a higher percentage of, you know, freedom, if you will?
Yeah, as I mentioned, one of the main components of why a city's unfunded liability grows is time and the number of retirees and past employees that they have. And MENAfee is a very new city, so they have very few past employees to fund their pensions. So that's the primary reason why their liabilities are so much lower than the rest of the city's shown.
Right, thanks. And the city, over the years, you know, we run lean and mean. Everybody works, you know, goes at 100 miles an hour all the time, and they function as such a, you know, a high-functioning team that they make it look easy. It is not easy. And you also noticed during Jen's explanation, she said that we factored in recession. Well, how do we know there's going to be a recession? Because they look ahead, they pay attention to, you know, the news primarily, they look at the cost of living, things like that. So because we budget five years at a time, we even budget in those possible recessions. It's just a remarkable achievement to be able to say that, you know how many cities owe billions of dollars in unfunded pensions? I mean, San Diego has had that issue for years and years and years. And you get in that bind like that by not handling your debt constantly. You have to balance that debt constantly. And the city of Temecula has done that since day one. We've never had anything but a balanced budget. And there was a time, before any of you people were born, that we actually put away as much as 30% in our reserve. And that also is unheard of. So I'm just really proud you did a great job, Jen, your whole department, Mr. City Manager and staff. Your vision of doing this is unique as far as cities go. It just doesn't happen. So for us to be in a position to be able to do this, and you know, once we make up our mind to do something, we do it, and we do it the best way possible. So thank you, everyone, for placing the city in such a beneficial position for our residents because we're going to have a lot more flexibility in how we can, you know, fund projects, the extra things we can do, we can take care of our employees. It's just good all the way around, and great job.
So I will echo some of that. You know, I remember the first time I sat through a budget hearing with you, Ms. Hennessy. I used your name in vain at one point because we were talking about firefighter staffing issues, which is near and dear to my heart. And, you know, I looked back on that and just always just, you know, realized what a remarkable staff and city this is because, you know, when you're on this city from the outside, you see things and you come in and you want to swing a big ax and say, well, we're just going to, you know, the city's doing things wrong and everything's, you know. And the reality is, no, I mean, there's, you know, there's always issues, there are always things that can be better. But the city has been a remarkable place, and a lot of it is due to, you know, folks like yourself. You know, a couple of months ago or a few months ago now, I asked Aaron, as we're going through this year, and the theme is Temecula Safe, and we've accomplished a lot of good things this year. And I told him, I said, hey, on the way out here this year, what's the last thing we could do that would be meaningful for the city? And he said, oh, I've got an idea. And so we've been working on this for a little while now. And you folks brought together this plan that's absolutely astonishing. Now, I feel like every new council member in every new city coming on board needs to watch this because in the audience here, we only have four people still who are not staff or board and commission members who have still managed to stick with us this long. And thank you all for, you know, being part of this massive celebration. Because I feel like, you know, and for the six people watching on TV right now, too, thank you.
My husband's watching.
Yeah, I know, right? So, but, you know, but I, you know, you can't go without saying what a massive opportunity this is for the city of Temecula. And it just, you know, it's not sexy. I mean, you know, I mean, I love your presentations. You know I love statistics and finance and all this. I find it all very fascinating. It is not to a lot of folks. It's not a social debate. It's not politically valued. But what we could do here by the end of this year would be one of the most fundamentally changing things this city has experienced. And we get criticized a lot of times for those things that we've done. Measure S was one of those, right? We constantly get criticized over Measure S, but we would not be having the conversation we're having today if not for Measure S.
We'd be in trouble.
We also get criticized, and I know we've had our own debates here on the council, about things like public safety and saying, well, you need your own police department or your own fire station, fire department. Well, you know, I would say arguably, contracting not only gives us access to two of the most respected and professional organizations with CalFire and Riverside Sheriff's Department arguably in the nation.
In the country.
But it also gives us the opportunity to do what we're doing here tonight because if we had our own pension obligations and liabilities financially that come along with having your own police station or police department and fire department, we wouldn't be having this conversation. And it was lost because the graphic you put up that was comparing other cities and all that, those cities that had the double asterisk next to them that said, these are the cities that, you know, have their own PD and fire, they are not in a position to be doing what we're doing here tonight. So, you know, so I, you know, I cannot emphasize enough how huge an opportunity this is for the city. The other thing, too, is, you know, a lot of folks, city managers, city council members and all that, and you see this a lot of cities, during their tenure, do amazing projects and make the city into these wonderful places and then leave the city in massive and oftentimes crippling debt. Because it's, I'll tell you, we joke about this sometimes, but it's easy to spend money when it's not your own. And we have this solemn responsibility to the taxpayers and every dollar that we use to spend it the right way. And this is, this is the right way right here. And not only were we able to do and continue to do nearly a billion dollars in, you know, capital improvement projects and all this stuff, but 70% of it's, you know, outside funding. We've built this amazing, you know, what folks for years referred to as the Taj Mahal. You know, I got to say, when we did the I-15 Task Force, it was really funny because we had council members from all over the region that came, and they sat behind this dais. And I got comments from two of them that day because they thought that the dais behind here was covered in leather.
Why?
I'm not kidding. I'm not kidding, right? There's this perception that like we're sitting on these gold thrones and we've got, you know, that is not, to me, it's just laminate, you know? In case anybody's wondering, it's not that awesome. But, but honestly, that's, you know, that's the perception that Temecula has sometimes. And it's not because we're just, you know, thriftily, you know, Aaron, you mentioned the investment that went into this building arguably brought in hundreds of millions of dollars of investment into Old Town.
We know it did.
And the value of that is just, you know, it's transformative. So, you know, I just wanted to take a moment to, you know, kudos to the city for, you know, and to you, Aaron, to all the hard work that everybody put into this, to Jen and your staff. It just, doing this, and I'll always regret using your name in vain that one day because, you know, it's been a remarkable journey with you all to come to this point tonight to see this thing moving forward. And for the four of you who are here, we expect a standing ovation if this gets passed.
Well, no doubt, Mr. Mayor, but we showed years back, 15 years prior to this, how we started, you know, moving toward this ultimate goal.
And so, you know, if, with the consent of the council, we can move this thing forward. This will put Temecula in an exclusive, unique, and enviable position that most cities and most special districts in the state, would you say 4,100 different, no one's, you know, that list of, you know, 100% funded pension liabilities and 100% funded, you know, facilities and all that, very few cities are in that place. So I would really urge this council to support this item moving forward and bring it back on the 13th. And I would say one last thing, and one of my questions, one of my concerns was, of course, and I remember when you first, you know, you've always done some sort of sensitivity analysis with our budgets. And I remember in 2019, you know, you had done some very robust sensitivity analysis projecting things like, you know, recessions and so forth. And I asked you, you know, at that meeting, I said, could you predict a worst-case scenario, like worse than we've ever seen before? And then, you know, 2020 happened. But the value of doing that put us in a very nimble, very quick position to make solid decisions at this city to make sure we never touched a dime of the reserve funds in 2020.
And we haven't ever.
And then that $14 million we received from the federal government in compensation for, you know, COVID relief all got pushed right back out into the community. And this, this kind of stuff isn't celebrated as much as it should be because it's just, it's just not as sexy. But sadly, this is the foundation of the community that lets us have all of the other conversations we can because we have the ability to have those conversations. So with that said, I would really appreciate the council's discretion here in being able to move this forward and wrap a ribbon around this on the 13th.
I would love to move approval if you don't have any other
Second.
Conversation. So for the record, there are no public comments, and I have a motion by Councilmember Edwards, is that correct?
Yes.
And then Councilmember Alexander for the second.
Anybody else? All right.
That's good.
All right, well, please cast your votes.
And history was made.
I wasn't kidding. Y'all, four of you stand up.
Standing ovation.
There you are.
The crowd goes wild.
And the four of you go wild. All right, take it easy. We've got law enforcement in the room, all right? Don't get too rowdy. All right, items for future council agendas. Anything? Nothing. All right, City Manager report.
No, just thank all five of you. Just, just an awesome business decision, and it's going to pay huge, huge dividends in the very, very near term. We don't have to wait 25 years to experience this. It's going to be right in front of us, so well done.
City Attorney?
We had a close session tonight. Council gave direction to the staff as noted on the agenda items, but there's no action to report under the Brown.
All right, well, we'll see you all on December 13th. Thank you all.